In summary, well, you see the comparison from 2019 to 2022 because those are the most, that's the last time accountability was done in this fashion. You see slight declines across the board, but generally speaking, although we don't typically talk about progress as making a small decline instead of a large decline, but in this case due to the circumstances, sometimes we are looking at it that way. So most of the decreases that you see are very small and in many cases less than what you saw in other towns in the state, things like that. So I think that's something to note. I do want to note within the growth scores and within scores among certain demographic groups, you do see progress or really small declines and within the growth scores as we talk about growth being like a year of growth being between 40 to 60% generally for growth, you see that we're pretty squarely within that in all of our demographic groups between 40 and 60%. A couple of highlights of the school's progress in this accountability rating versus previous accountability readings. In the first time that this new revised accountability piece was released in 2018, Norwood High School was listed in the 30th percentile accountability rating. In 2019, we were able to increase that to the 47th percentile and then fast forward to this year, the next accountability reading in the 56th percentile. Still not where we want to be, but steady progress for sure and we are proud of that. Additionally, specific groups of students showed increased growth scores. For example, low-income students in ELA, high needs and special education students in math, we see growth there that kind of bucks the trend of any decline as well. We also are proud to celebrate in addition to the increase in the accountability rates, some markers that are incorporated within that. Norwood High School celebrates a four-year graduation rate of 96.3. Keep in mind, those are typically like one year behind, right? And the data, an extended engagement rate of 97.2 and a dropout rate in the year that this was measured of 0%, which you can't do better than that. So we are super excited about that and those are all improvements over time from 2018 to 2019 and so on. So we're super excited about that. Do keep in mind, it's important to note that four-year graduation rate, extended engagement rate and dropout rate are actually all speaking about different years because your four-year graduation rate talks about students that graduated in four years with the class of Your extended graduation rate is typically a year behind it because you haven't seen it yet and then your dropout rate is measured annually with all students in your school. So they're not like all talking about the same students at the same time, but to see improvement across all three of those things over time is a positive sign. So we are happy about that. We'll jump into the priority areas if that's okay with the committee. All right. So we'll give a quick summary of, we have four overarching goals. If you've been with us for a while, the four overarching goals are similar to goals that we've had in the past because they're long-term strategic initiatives and goals and they align with our district's strategic plan mostly. I'll talk about the first one, which relates to culturally responsive and trauma-informed practices. So looking over the next two years, we want to make sure we're closely aligning all our professional development, all our meeting time, all our teacher planning time, our goals are all synthesized together. So we're continuing to develop shared professional practice and student learning goals focused on all of these things. So people are very clear on what we're working on and we're measuring it over time. We're participating in ongoing professional development that relates to the work we've done in the past on culturally responsive practices, that relates to the shift or the continuation ahead in which we'll study and grow in the area of trauma-informed practices and the overlap between those two things. A continuation of implementing instructional rounds that are tied very closely to that. We did them quarterly this year and three times last year will continue to do them quarterly. We're really proud of the progress we've made there in the way that that ties in a lot of the work we do. Our staff has worked hard at analyzing data around students' sense of belonging and student engagement and we look forward to continuing to do that as we shift our focus to looking at students' skills and our ability to teach in the area of accessing higher-order thinking skills. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. Other things that are mentioned here, our focus on data analysis, recruitment and targeted professional development to change the demographic makeup of our upper-level coursework classes. And we're partnering with Mass Insight over the next few years for additional professional development for our teachers, additional resources for our students to be able to really focus on that goal over time. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Dren. We'll take priority area number two on the Portrait of the Norwood Graduate.
So in priority area number two, we are, our goal is to improve existing grade level benchmarks, which involves curriculum instruction and assessment to develop new learning experiences that develop and measure student success with each of the five Norwood graduate characteristics or components. Collaborators, creators, communicators, critical thinkers and problem solvers and citizens by synthesizing our Portrait of the Norwood Graduate with our professional development and our equity goals. As Dr. Galligan referenced previously, our work in instructional rounds has been hugely important to us at the high school and quarterly, developing a problem of practice connected to higher-order thinking and depth of knowledge and align that with professional development and school district goals. It also allows us to live and to model as a staff. Those five skills, our students can see us practicing it and we model that for them. Continuing to provide professional, to provide opportunities for common planning time through the imagination of meeting time and shift towards professional learning communities during staff and department meetings, that's been hugely important in department meetings. Our staff can gather in their content in grade level groups and then in our staff meetings, they're working across content to do some of the work on our, you know, analyzing data from instructional rounds or as Dr. Galligan said, analyzing data around student sense of belonging and helping us all to grow. Also participating in professional development focused on higher-order thinking and really fleshing out the depth of knowledge and helping people push students beyond those lower-level skills into higher-level evaluation, synthesizing, creating in the classroom. We are fortifying the four As and five Cs, focusing on the documentation of skill development and embedding those skills into our living and breathing curriculum. The commitment to our citizenship rubric lives in every classroom. Those are hanging in posters, we reference those in class meetings, teachers talk about it with students and they're measured on report cards. So we're very, very proud of how far we've come and continually we use our data from MCAS scores, AP scores, AP enrollment, graduation rate, dropout rate, mass core completion to keep pushing us to do the work of the Portrait of the Norwood Graduate.
Priority area three is career preparation expansion. Since 2018, we've made significant strides in the area of career education and we have a few action steps aligned with that over the next two years. Continue implementation of the healthcare innovation pathway in alignment with DESI requirements. As you know, we have a recognized innovation pathway through the Department of Education. This is our fourth year there, so this is the first year we've been fully loaded with students, with four classes of students. Our students are completing their 100-hour capstones and internships in the senior class. They're going to have a banquet coming up for any student who is career-oriented and has participated in work-based learning or career pathway coming up. Our partnerships have strengthened with Mass Hire, with Harvard Medical and with other partners in the area and we're super proud of that. Maintaining that and building upon it is really important and we have to adhere to all of the DESI requirements for that as well. So continuing to support that program is really important. At the same time, we want to continue the development of other career pathways. So over the last couple of years, we've started internally an information career pathway as well as a business and finance career pathway. We do not at this time have innovation pathway designation through the state and we want to take those steps as appropriate throughout the course of this plan. As a side note, we also are attending an information session in the next two weeks with a team of staff for a new innovation pathway that'll be offered in two years' time on renewable and green energy. So we're super excited to learn more about that and see if that's a potential fit for us down the line. And lastly, brought in our internship and work-based learning programs since, you know, and this aligns, all of this objective aligns very closely with the strategic plan of the district, but since our shift in our school schedule that allowed for students to get credit during the school day for work-based learning, over the last two years, we've seen those numbers grow significantly and we anticipate that it'll continue to grow over time. So broadening those internship and work-based learning opportunities where students can receive credit and sometimes money during the school day is a win-win. And students, this is appropriate for students who are enrolled in a career pathway, but also for students who are not enrolled in a career pathway that find out later on that they are interested in these things. We want to make sure we have space and areas for them to explore those interests. I'll turn it over for our last one to Mrs. Dren.
And our last area is a priority area centers around our first-year students and offering them additional supports. The goal is to adequately identify, plan for and support students' academics, behavioral and emotional needs through increased support for first-year students. These needs have increased as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. We would like to maximize our current schedule that continues to use WIN intervention courses, special education services, as well as prevent potential programming recommended by the Grade Nine Supports Committee. Organize and implement a Grade Nine Supports Committee that will conduct a needs assessment of the academic, emotional, behavioral supports that are needed for a successful transition from middle school to high school and propose enhanced first-year supports for students. And we want to continue our implementation of our restorative practices as an alternative to traditional discipline and the RISE and RESET programs and begin implementation of restorative practices at the classroom levels in select areas.
It's important to note just one thing on that, our first-year supports committee had its second meeting today. We're meeting approximately every three weeks. We have a group of 15 staff who are beginning to work and we anticipate over the next year. We have laid out a pretty aggressive one-year plan that has four phases, research, visits, recommendations, and we will be communicating to the committee probably in the fall about, with an update on that and where we're at. And just one other note on the entire plan, at the bottom of each, there's a section for budget implications. So, you know, I'll be pretty honest, very honest. We can do all of these things to a certain degree in a budget-neutral way. We can do all of these things a lot better and with a lot more students with budgetary support that is listed. With that, we're happy to answer any questions that the committee might have.
Just a quick follow-up. I just want to thank the high school staff and the leadership of Dr. Galligan and Mrs. Dren. This is a high school that has become more and more diverse and one of the conversations we had about five years ago was about the different kinds of students who go to Norwood High School, their efforts and the staff's efforts to engage them, offer opportunities, career exploration, career pathways, multiple means of being successful at Norwood High School and come out and be able to be a constructive part of our community. I'm very proud of the work that they have done and thankful for their leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, Teresa. I know, do you want to go first?
No.
Okay.
So we answered most of them over email, so thank you. But on the topic of budget, because I always kind of struggle with improving school improvement plans, knowing we may or may not have the budget for everything that is in them. So pathways program, you've requested business and science teachers for two years in a row and we have yet to been able to get them into the budget for FY23 or FY24. So that I am assuming is one of the impacts that you're talking about where you can do some, but not all that you would like to do. The AP, trying to grow the AP programming, is there a certain threshold, like what is the X number of students that if we expand AP, we have the students, but we don't have the staff? And then of course, that's a budgetary impact or is that not a concern?
Not as much of a concern because when you offer more APs, you're kind of shuffling students around from one place to another. So students that might have been enrolled in something else at another level or similar course at another level, you hope for them to instead be enrolled in that course at the AP level or a different course at the AP level. So typically, so there's not as much of an impact there. Where there is an impact, like for example, one of the reasons we've requested the science teacher over the last few years is so that we can expand our computer science program into a full-time teaching position. Right now, that's a part-time teaching position that also teaches another science area, right? Once we do that, we'll be able to add a second AP computer science class, like a different one. Right now, we offer, we would be able to operate computer science principles. Right now, we have a, through a pilot program through DESI, a few students that take that through the virtual high school program, but those numbers could expand significantly. So that's an example of how budget would directly tie into more AP offerings for students. But in other ways, you're just hoping to have students have upward mobility of sorts for students to be able to access AP that might not have accessed it previously due to a whole host of conditions. Some of them are barriers that have been put in place along the way and we hope to lift those and be more equitable around that. And some of it is professional development, teachers having more teachers prepared to teach that. And so that's a big piece of the Mass Insight partnership is the built-in professional development, so we can, we call it building your bench, right? So you have teachers that are ready to step up and teach AP when you have the students that are ready to do it.
Okay. And then last budget question, I know this is a whole can of worms and you don't have to go into all of it tonight, but can you just briefly share with everybody the development of the RISE program and trying to grow it into the reset because we don't have that ability in the operating budget and I believe we're trying to get grants, correct?
Sure. We were exposed to the RISE program through just conversations with other schools and professional development and became really intrigued because we're always looking to do better for our students and the RISE program offered an opportunity for students to do some real, when they've made a mistake, when there's been a conduct violation, rather than go to suspension as a first and only consequence, this really allows students to take a look in and reflect and think about not only what, you know, what we always talk about with them is your intent versus your impact and then trying to look at that impact and make it right, repair harm. So the RISE program has been, I think, one of the best parts of the school lately. It's really been, it's given kids an opportunity to grow and develop strategies and skills and we don't have a high rate of recidivism for the program. We do have a revolving door because the teacher is amazing and builds great relationships of kids who constantly go back to seek out, you know, skills tweak, you know, and like before this, they feel themselves getting frustrated. Rather than act on that, they go and they are looking to do a quick reset with him before they go on. And he's doing such an amazing job with the RISE program and we always have students in there that the kids who are going back to work on those skills aren't getting the access that they need. So the, most schools that have a RISE program also have a reset program, which is like a quick fix. You're on your way to class, something happens and you just need another, a minute to gather yourself or re-regulate. That's where you go, you know, before you head there and something else happens along the way and builds up and then you can't go. Or if you're in class and there is some sort of an issue that happens, you can step out, have the opportunity to calm down, process it and get back to class quickly as opposed to staying out of class or being suspended and going home and missing that instructional time. So these are, you know, the schools that have these programs are finding a lot of success with keeping kids in school, building trust between students and staff and also growing those relationships. So, you know, we think it's been a huge bonus and we're hoping to be able to expand.
So not only is this fully me, more than one priority area in our strategic plan, it's also best practice. And since November, with the change in 37H and 34S, this is what they're telling us we should be doing. So I keep saying, 37H and 34S is an unfunded mandate and this is what that unfunded mandate looks like in action.
Yep. Agreed.
Any other questions on the strategic plan?
School improvement plan?
That's what I meant.
No.
All right, there's been a lot of emails this week and they all have an acronym, SIP. SIP, I got it. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve it? By Teresa, do I have a second? By Kate. Seconded by Kate. All those in favor? Five to zero. Thank you very much. You're all your hard work.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So our next presenter, Mr. Olson, is actually at home. He was ill today. He's here in spirit and in video.
Oh, there he is. Perfect, all right.
Here I am, hi.
Hello.
Thanks for allowing me to join remotely.
Glad you could still make it in some fashion.
Yes.
We listened to Dr. Townsend enough.
Dr. Galligan did a wonderful job explaining all the various data sections, so I don't think, in the new format, so I don't think I necessarily need to go through all those, but some highlights that I had dotted down that I wanted to make sure that we shared were also very similar. And we've definitely seen a change in our population and that's evident in the data sets prior to the actual school improvement plan. And also our MCAS scores have only had a slight decrease and I agree, I was going to say the same exact thing. We don't usually try and say slight decrease compared to a large decrease, but in considering COVID gaps and some things that I've been reading about happening across the country, I was really pleased to see just very slight decrease and even in math, we had an increase in our SGP. So that was exciting to see and something of note. So some highlights that I shared, there were a lot of great things that came out of school improvement plan and just in general in the last few years. It's been a great few years of getting to know the community and getting to know the school and ways that we can improve. Some of the things that are really exciting were the work we did around the school-wide expectations that we call trots of success, so thinking about others, respecting property on your actions and thinking about safety. We also really started to think about the behavioral expectations of the entire school and I did, I started a pilot program this year, also a RISE program, named it the same for consistency, but at elementary school, it's a little different. But in March, we started a program where students who may have made a mistake or thought, did something that maybe they felt that they shouldn't have or we felt they shouldn't have, we put them in the RISE program with our school adjustment counselor. They meet in the morning and then a couple of seconds during the day to talk about impact of what went wrong and then the impact of their actions and how to fix the problem, basically. And it's tailored to the developmental needs of the students. So that allows them to get real-time instruction around SEL needs and how regulate themselves and how to fix a problem that they may have created. So that's been pretty exciting as well. We fully implemented a reading data protocol, different, and implemented all tiers of support for those students in reading and we're really excited with the impact that we've been having and the growth scores we've been seeing especially this year. And then also the PTO is added in a STEAM night this year to try and involve our parents. And of course, we've been spending a lot of time this year working on CRIS and making sure that we're infusing our practice, that into our practice every day. So considering all of those things, many of our priority areas stayed the same, but they're different. They're a continuation of what we've been working on. So our first priority area is, it continues to be creative, positive, welcoming, cohesive and enthusiastic school community. Our second, utilize data to continually analyze student growth in order to develop appropriate intervention plans for students. And our third is different because the third before was learning how to use the new program for ELA, but now we've switched that over to strengthening SEL instruction in all tiers utilizing the FTS as process. So we, if we go through some of the action items, the biggest for the first area is around the idea of creating a diversity team that has a subcommittee that has teachers and parents that mirror the population of our students so that we can really talk about ways that we can push forward from the ways that we're going to involve the entire community. We are going to be doing a diversity family event and also some diversity days are fest at the school, but we want to make sure that we're making that not something that is a one-day deal, but something that we infuse and adds to the current work that we've been doing. We want to make sure we're increasing engagement for all parents and we have, there's some feedback over there, I hope you're not hearing it there, sorry.
We're not.
It does keep it up as blue for us.
Sorry about that. So we, as long as you don't hear it, I'm okay. So we have, we have a teaching plan for our child expectations and it's connected to the former SEL program, Open Circle, so we do need to spend some time recalibrating with Character Strong, making sure that we're aligning some of the lessons in Character Strong with the way that we roll out the child expectations in school. And we also want to utilize Parent Square to make sure that we are communicating in a way that all parents want to be communicated with. What is the change in here is continuing to embed all the inclusive and culturally responsive practices in daily instruction. We want to make sure that we are also, we're going to pick that up and going into more of the higher-order thinking skills as well and really having conversations about race and equity with the students to help fancy that anti-racist community that we want as a, as a district, as a country. We are going to also start to infuse some more levels of diversity, thinking about students who might be neurodivergent or have some learning disabilities and so trying to do some of the same work we did with finding literature that's exclusive, making sure that we're looking at that area as well. And also developing a buddy program with some of our self-contained programs so the students can experience the joy of working with their peers, all peers at school. We're moving to the data portion, it's very similar, but it's all about math. This, for the two-year term, we did everything in reading and it was very successful, so we want to replicate in math and make sure that we have intervention blocks for math, that we're utilizing data protocols in math and that we are doing all of the same things that we've been doing in reading in math, so they're easier for them. And finally, the SEL instruction in all the tiers, I'm very, very excited about this one. It's something that I did in my former district and I know coming in, I really wanted to build us up and set us up for success and being able to analyze student behavioral dignity and SEL data in order to provide different tiers of support for our students. So Character Strong will be a really solid tier one instruction for students in SEL and they also have some tier two components that we want to build off of and make sure that we have students that are looking at data and providing students with almost an intervention block in SEL who need it, that they can continue to provide them with, be instructed to help them to regulate their behavior, their emotions in a way that allows them to make the right choice at the right time, even if they're feeling frustrated. So we're excited to really work on that piece. I have started last, being middle last year and through this year, we do have the eager forms that teachers can send in if something happens that they need to talk to students about, if you're lower level, not a big problem, but, but at a lower level and we have that data and we also have our RISE, the restorative and full ed program, which is based on data to start with that we can move forward with next year when we're building the tier levels we look for for students. That's all the components that we wanted to work on and the team wanted to put forward.
Great, thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Olson?
I do, but I don't always want to go, so anybody else has questions?
You know I just look straight at you every time I ask. It's not a bad thing.
I didn't even have to look up to know that you were looking at me.
Uh, does anyone else, without excuse, have questions for Mr. Olson? Okay.
Um, so first question, and I apologize if it's in there and I just don't know. When you say S E L I L T, what is I L T?
Sorry, I didn't mention that as I was going through. Um, it's, it's, it's an instructional learning team. So as we're doing this really important work, um, it can't be just the work of me or my brainchild. So we put together an instructional learning team, which would be this, uh, school adjustment counselor, myself, and, um, a few parent, a few, uh, teachers who will be really looking at the data that we have available now, how we want to tweak that, what data we need, and how we will implement the different tiers of support. So it's, it's a process, and then this team will be, um, meeting regularly to, to think about how we're going to do this and what we're going to do moving forward. In my mind, this team also becomes the MTS S team. So when a teacher has, for example, right now, if a teacher has an issue with a student, or feels a student has an issue in reading or math, they, um, they complete some forms, we look at data, and we come together as an educational team, and we talk about the student, and we decide on, uh, more interventions a student may need to help them advance. Um, so we want to replicate that in S E L, so this I L T, I would believe in my mind, would then morph into the team that would come together and meet with the teachers as they submit, um, paperwork and, uh, requests to, uh, get help with a student who may not be, um, implementing the S E L tier-one S E L instruction in the same, um, way we would hope.
Okay, thank you. And the funds that are mentioned in there that you might need for summer, is that out of the general fund? Is that Essar funding? Where would that come from?
No, there was a general fund, but, um, I, I, there was a, an error in when it was submitted, so it wasn't part of it, but I am going to be using, uh, I already have funds for some professional development in school that I hope to use. So it's not part of it.
Okay, thank you.
It's not impacting your budget. I mean, and also as part of this team, I was really excited to see that we're having some elementary behavioral support. We've been talking about, um, that posting, what that might look like, and it's very exciting. So I would hope that that person would also be, um, instrumental in helping to guide us through the, through the development of, of all of these layers of support for our students.
And then, um, Dr. Thompson, this might be a question more for you, but the pilot program, the RISE program at the Oldham, is a goal to get that into all the elementary schools, or what are potential next steps?
Yeah, that will probably, we're meeting tomorrow. That probably will be one of the topics we talked about. Steve will update us on that pilot. There's been some conversations about how do we do it at other schools. Uh, each one's a little bit differently, but we will look at that and I'll need to talk to the suspend for a while about how it works.
I can, I can add that since, um, we started in March, we've had eighteen students participate or have eighteen situations where we felt like a student needed to participate. And of those, um, there was only one that had a second incident, so it's been working well. And I would agree, um, with the high school presentation that it helps to build the relationship with the school adjustment counselor, and the students do go back and say, well, I was feeling frustrated, I was feeling this or that. And they, they build on that relationship that they're building through participation in the program, so it's been very successful.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Olson? Great, um, if there are no more questions, does anyone want to make a motion to approve the S I P for the Oldham for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five? Twenty, yes, I had that right, yeah. Seconded by David, seconded by Teresa. All those in favor? Hi, hi. So five to zero. Thank you very much.
Mr. Olson feel better.
Thank you very much, bye.
Hi, thanks.
Okay, so next on our agenda is Dr. Grant from the Callahan to present the school improvement plan there.
Thanks for having me.
Yep, go right on.
You're on.
So I wanted to start by thanking all of you, um, to give us an opportunity to share our plan with you. Um, I wanted to first share, um, some highlights that, um, highly send accomplishment, accomplishment, I'll do better. Um, related to like our current SIP. Um, and then also like our team worked on, like, the new priority areas, and we were being really reflective and like trying to be responsive, um, to the needs of all of our students, so that's our goal, and I'll talk about like the plans moving forward. Um, so our, like, current SIP, like, we have high-quality instruction as, like, our first priority. So we kept that, but we combined that with, like, the third one, which is S E L. Um, so we're putting all things instruction into, like, one area. Um, so some of the highlights are, we implemented, like, you know, the new programs, um, so we have visions for math, we have MyView for ELA, um, STEM schools for science, and then soon we'll have, like, Character Strong as a new program, so we'll continue to implement programs. Um, but that doesn't mean, like, high-quality instruction. Um, so, you know, throughout the last couple of years, teachers were receiving, like, PDs and coaching specifically from coordinators, like, they've come into model lessons, they have given feedbacks to my teachers. Um, so those pieces are really important to improve our practices. Um, so we'll continue to learn more about the programs. There are so many resources in our programs that we don't even know about, so like now that we're in, like, years two and years three and year four, that, like, we are diving deeper into those programs, so we're not using things like, you know, from, like, teachers pay teachers, like, you know, everything that we need is in our program. So we're using that for our small group instructions, and that's, you know, like, our model. Um, so that's the work that we're going to do moving forward. Um, we're also going to embed, like, S E L strategies into everything that we do. We talked about culturally responsive teaching practices. We need to do that every single day. So that's our goal for the next couple of years. Um, my, some of my EL teachers, um, they are already planning to do some summer work, um, on how to look at, like, the programs that we have and embed some of the strategies, like, some of the culturally responsive strategies into our curriculum. So they will be sharing that with other teachers. Um, so that's the first one that we have in our new SIP. Um, the second one is Effective Student Support System. So this is the old second one from, like, MTS S. Um, what we found was, like, MTS S is just one step of, like, the entire umbrella of, like, student support. So when we think about, like, if we're being effective in, like, supporting all of our students, like, we think about, like, MTS S as one step. There are other things that we're going to do. So some highlights, um, are, we had, like, we have an MTS S team. Um, a couple of years ago, we didn't have that, um, but we worked with, you know, testing coaches. Um, we developed a team, we set up procedures, um, when we have, like, a lot of protocols. Um, so this year, what we did was, we actually embedded schedules, like, into, like, you know, our master's schedule. So like, you know, we never really knew, like, you know, when we're meeting for, like, MTS S meetings, so like, that was a little confusing. Um, so what we did this year is Wednesdays will be, like, on, like, grades two, one to two students. On Fridays, we'll meet with, like, our students, like, in, um, in grades three to five, um, or as needed. So like, having that schedule, like, is more, like, it's easier on, like, you know, everyone's calendars because we do want to bring the entire team together. Um, all of our conversations are data-related, so every teacher who comes through the meeting, like, they will be bringing in, like, the data that they collected. Um, right now, we're focusing more on academic data. Moving forward, in the next two years, we want to add, like, continue academics, but we also wanted to add other data, like, other data and other strategies. Um, so like, we talked a lot about, like, behavior. So like, this year, we have a few MTS S meetings that are focusing on, like, not just academics, but more on behavior. So, you know, if students are not responding to, like, certain teachers or certain strategies, what else can we do? So like, as the team, we come up with a plan. Um, so we do, like, you know, three to four cycles, um, to see, like, you know, if our strategies are working. Um, if not, then, like, we'll revise it and then do it again. Um, so we always revise it until we get it right. Um, so that's our idea of when moving forward and also adding, um, more practices on, like, you know, trauma-informed practices, uh, more inclusive practices. Um, the idea is to create a menu of interventions and strategies for our teachers. So when they come to our MTS S meeting, we have, like, you know, tier-one students, these are the strategies that you can use. Tier-two students, these are the strategies that you can use. Um, so that, that's the idea moving forward. Um, so like I said, MTS S is just one piece of the student support system. Um, what we really need in our school is, we focus so much on, like, tier-two and three students. We really need to think about tier-one as a school-wide model. Um, so since March, we've implemented, um, like, PBIS, we call it CARES, in our school. Um, and that, like, we are receiving a lot of good feedbacks from, like, students, from families, and from our teacher. So now we just, we're just going to do it. So we're going to do that for the next couple of years. Um, we are setting school-wide expectations, posters will be up. Um, we're using CARES as our acronym, so like, those are our school values. Um, and pretty much, we wanted to just provide a positive learning environment and culture at the Callahan School. So that's number two. Um, for our third one, um, the old version was culturally responsive practices, but I added, like, inclusive um, in that title, because when we think about the culturally responsive practices, we think, like, race and ethnicity, but it's way more than that, so we need to be inclusive. Um, so the highlights are, like, you know, all of our staff members, we have received training from Highlander. Um, the super highlight is, like, two of our Highlander champions, um, they ran one of our staff meetings. So like, I'm building teachers' capacity. Dr. Thompson was at that staff meeting and saw that, like, you know, we're using our own teachers. They're talking to their colleagues, they're sharing their ideas. Um, so we're going to do more of that. Um, in addition to that, like, our PTA is being very strategic about, like, you know, the assemblies that we're putting together and rich one opportunities, um, so students are exposed to different cultures, different ideas. Um, and this is also our professional practice goal, like, in the district. Um, we want to take it one step more, which is, instead of just picking three strategies that you're going to use and do, like, for your professional practice goal, we are going to do that every single day. Like, because this is not just, like, a checkbox, like, you know, three strategies, one, two, three, we're done. It's more that, like, you know, we are really, like, believing that, like, we can do this work and we can build relationships with students. Um, this is all in response to, like, you know, like, some of the behaviors that we have been seeing overall. Um, the last one that we have, like, that I added is positive school culture. This is the new one. Um, because since day one that I met my staff and students, like, the number one thing that they said was that sense of community at the Callahan School. And I heard that loud and clear. Teresa was one of them, or like, who told me that. Um, so like, you know, keeping that in mind, like, we wanted to make the school more cohesive, more inclusive, and just, you know, building that sense of belonging for all members, not just our students, not just our families, but also with our staff members too. Um, so one thing that my teachers loved is the opportunity to talk to each other. Um, so this year, we've created, like, you know, CPT time that is, um, like, during their lunch and recess block, their extra time, um, so they can talk to each other. We, the, the full team is together. I invite coordinators to come to our CPT. I go to the CPT, and we're just sharing ideas and planning together. So this is not for just, like, you know, I need to plan the next two weeks' lesson. It's more like having those courageous conversations. Um, so we'll continue to use this time to have more of those conversations. Um, like, I, my teachers told me that, like, you know, topics, having specific topics is really helpful. So like, I've been doing, like, one week we do ELA, one week we do math, one week we do, um, science, and another week we talk about data. So like, you know, we have, like, a rotation going on during our CPT time. So we'll continue to do that. Um, teachers and staff have been asking about bringing back, like, school-wide programs, um, and events, like, more like family events. Um, so we've had our back-to-school nights, our open house, um, we have bingo nights, and we want more of that. So we're bringing in our families, um, and also at the same time, reaching out to them as well. Um, so the overall idea is to create a space for, like, our staff, our students, and our families to, like, you know, share their practice, share their thoughts, and then learn from each other. So if we do all of that that I mentioned, um, students will have success for today and be prepared for tomorrow, which is the mission for the Callahan School. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Grant on the Callahan S I P? Sure you know?
Uh, thank you, Scarlett. Um, it's been a while since I've been a Callahan mom. My daughter's in tenth grade, so time flies since she was there. Um, but it is a great community, and, um, Callahan CARES is a very good name for your staff. They're, they're amazing. Um, so budget questions, because that's just where my head often is. Um, so you mentioned a couple of things that are needed, and I just want to clarify if you already have them or if you're saying similar to the high school improvement plan, that you have some, but you need more. So like, with priority one, um, you mentioned, like, the, um, reading specialist, interventionist, the Title I teacher, the para's. You already have that full staff, right?
Yeah, so I, we built the SIP, like, you know, based on, like, what we already have. Um, I know, like, one question is, like, the interventionist, like, we're trying to put it in our operating budget. Um, I know eventually, like, that, I'm hoping that that will happen. Um, and I just wanted to point out that that is so essential to our small group instruction model. So like, for example, in my first-grade classroom, um, we do a rotation, so like, the teacher will do a mini lesson, and then we break out into small groups, and those small groups are run by, like, you know, my reading specialist, my Title I teacher, um, para. So like, you know, that's how we made it work. So without these personnels, like, you know, the whole model wouldn't work.
Okay. And Dr. Thompson, we just moved two of the interventionists into the operating budget. We have two more or one more for FY twenty-five?
Uh, it's at least two. It's whether it's two or three, because we had to skim the year before.
Oh, there's still two or three? I thought it was one or two.
Two or three that are coming out of this year's budget.
And FY twenty-five, that grant does expire, so we have to move them or lose them. Am I accurate?
Yep, they're, again, uh, the, the Essar, uh, the Essar grant, the focus of that, our purpose of that was to close gaps. The key way to close gaps is to put the people in place to do the work in the school during the school day. Uh, the interventionists are doing groups, they're looking at data, they're helping teachers assemble data. Um, and the growth scores are showing the difference.
Okay. And then just a similar question, it's about, for like, priority two, like, when you're talking about your MTS S team, you currently have that full team or you need more support?
We have a three, four, four-person team, including myself. Um, and my teachers are being nice. They're doing this out of their CPT time, like, their capture block time. Um, so they're not necessarily getting paid, so it doesn't affect the budget, um, selfishly, like, I'm, like, great. Like, you know, I, I just have to plan for it, but like, I, I do, you know, wish that, like, you know, eventually we can give them a stipend, um, because they are doing a lot of work. It's not just about, like, you know, running the meetings um, and sharing ideas. Like, I do have one teacher in particular, she's creating, like, data, she's on her own, like, for everyone else. Um, so we're trying to, like, you know, build teachers' capacity so they can do that on their own, but we're not there yet. Uh, maybe it's by, like, you know, twenty twenty-five, we'll get there. Uh, but like, the, the idea is to, like, you know, hold on to the team, build teachers' capacity, and hopefully eventually that, like, you know, they can get some stuff for it too.
Thank you.
I just want to say that that was one of the things similar to that, that, that jumped out. Um, that I, I really love the idea of these collaborative conversations and, um, it seems like a great opportunity and would be great to see happen across, you know, the district, of course. So I'm sure that, that, that happens organically, but that you're carving time for it, I think is great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? There are no other questions. Do I have a motion to approve the Oldham C I P for?
Callahan.
Callahan. Already did the Oldham for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five. Moved by Teresa, do I have a second? Pick on Joan this time, seconded by Joan. All those in favor? Hi, hi, so five to zero. Thank you very much, Dr. Grant. Okay, moving on is Dr. Ballier with the Willett. Welcome, Dr. Ballier.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me. It's a privilege to be able to share the Willa Early Childhood Center's, uh, school improvement plan. Um, first, I wanted to really give a shout-out to our school council. Um, at the Willa, I've been, uh, a member of many school councils, um, in my school leader role in the past, and I will say, like, this year's school council was especially thoughtful, um, especially collaborative, reflective. Um, and it was a privilege to be able to work with families and staff members and, and look at multiple iterations of these priorities, look at our school-wide data, reflect on our efforts this year, and really think forward um, in terms of where we want to see the Willa go. Look at our school-wide data, reflect on our efforts this year and really think forward um in terms of where we want to see the Willa go um next. So they, they deserve a lot of credit for um the work in the school improvement plan. Uh, I'm first going to share some, some highlights uh and then introduce the priorities that we have set forth for um two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five. You'll see in the beginning, we have our data, um, our accountability measures, which, you know, do look different, um, especially from where we started. The high school level where there is um much more standardized assessment data. Uh, and thinking about our students at the early childhood level, there's less standardized assessment data, um, but still plenty of data. Um, so you have, of course, our demographics data, which, you know, I think is interesting to think about. Um, and reflect on because it does share for us who our district is um at the earliest sense and, and where we are um going. You know, as we think, you know, when our um students are, you know, will be the class of two thousand thirty-five. Um, currently for kindergarten this year, so it gives us a great picture of um who we are and all that we have to celebrate in terms of the diversity and the assets we have and the diversity um starting in kindergarten. Um, but I, I wanted to spend more time highlighting, you know, some of the other ways, right, that we can look at data and think about the work happening uh at, at the kindergarten level. Um, first starting with literacy, uh, this year, um, literacy has been a significant focus for our community. And that started uh before this school year even started, when we received the Desi Early um Literacy Leadership Grant. Uh, and, you know, that was an opportunity for us um to receive professional development, coaching, uh, assessment analysis, all of which focused on evidence-based literacy practices and materials in alignment with um our science of reading. Uh, and the kindergarten team concentrated um on specifically foundational literacy skills, um, such as phonics and phonemic awareness for this year. Uh, it is a three-year grant, so as we look forward to next year, um, we'll be focusing more on reading comprehension uh and writing um for next year along with our um literacy coach from the Desi Grant. And again, I want to give, um, you know, a lot of credit to the Willa team, our educators, um, our paraprofessionals, everyone on the team, including Stephanie West, our curriculum coordinator, um, for really thinking about how we can leverage the resources of this literacy grant uh in service of advancing students' learning. And, you know, related to that, um, thinking about another highlight, which is literacy and data-driven instruction. You know, a big um part of this literacy grant is really looking at literacy data. Um, and we did a lot of work this year around, you know, thinking about what is the data telling us and not waiting until you get to the next assessment window, but looking at data um formatively so we can catch up with where students are, uh, because students are growing and changing so rapidly at this age level. Um, they want to be able to give them what they need and really leverage the one year that we have for them to prioritize early literacy. So, you know, the team, again, last summer, there was an assessment team um brought together by um Stephanie West, you know, and the culmination of that team um was creating an assessment binder um that really looked at what are the assessments that we have available to us and what is going to be the scope and sequence so we can be intentional um with our thirteen kindergarten classrooms about, you know, using the same materials and talking the same language, and we're talking about our early literacy skills um using data. That included bringing MTS as practices, multi-tier systems of support. Um, and, you know, keeping in mind our framing of, you know, students at the kindergarten level are struggling, they, they're developing. Um, and it's our goal um to help them develop and progress um in the year that we have with them in kindergarten. Next highlight I want to share is on social-emotional learning, which again has been another focus of our year's work in alignment with the previous school improvement plan. Um, the team selected Second Step as our social-emotional learning curriculum um for the Willa and that aligns with Little Mustang's Preschool Academy, who's been using Second Step for two years. Uh, kindergarten classrooms piloted Second Step um from October to December before recommending um that curriculum to the selection committee. Uh, and myself and Ms. Wilson, Eschville Adjustment Council have been collaborating um with Second Step to plan professional development for both the Willa and LMPA staff members next fall. Related to social-emotional learning, you know, Dr. Grant spoke about um tier one. Um, Second Step is a tier-one support that all students receive. We also um piloted this year a positive behavior intervention system, um, which was the A B C core values. Always try our best, be inclusive and create positive change. Uh, and so in piloting that, that included a daily morning routine with a fun little song that goes plays over the intercom. Um, monthly community assemblies to bring all of our students and staff together, um, where each month a different class presents their learning um and connects it to the A, the B or the C. Um, giving specific and tangible praise with our Mustang cards. Um, and really thinking about inclusive and culturally responsive language um and also incorporating staff recognition into that PBIS, so that not just for students, but also for, for staff. Um, we also now have a PBIS team and that's being facilitated by our School Adjustment Council and V C B A. Uh, and they are currently working with um educators to make recommendations for, okay, we piloted this. What changes do we want to make for next year and make this even stronger um for our students coming into us in September? Another highlight, um, you know, that I want to shout out is our work around culturally responsive and sustaining pedagogy. Um, we collaborated with Highlander to um really think about um a culturally responsive and anti-racist lens to instruction with the belief that, you know, if we're talking about uh culturally responsive practice and equity and inclusion in a silo and not applying it to the teaching and learning that students experience every day, it's a missed opportunity. So we have three um champions uh who worked with our coach from Highlander this year. Uh, and they um applied that culturally responsive lens to the My View curriculum, specifically looking at what are the texts that are part of My View in these different units? And what identities do we see or don't see represented in these texts? Um, and so the three teachers who did that work this year um will be part of our instructional leadership team moving forward next year so that work, you know, moves from pockets of classrooms to um whole school work that's part of our professional development. But already this year, we made some um additions to our school-wide texts, you know, including we moved together, um, May Among the Stars, Nigel and the Moon, um, to bring, you know, more representation of different characters and different identities, um, in more complex texts uh to all of our kindergarten classrooms. Um, and the last highlight that I'll share in terms of, you know, the accountability work from our previous school improvement plan into our work this year, is just that all of these um celebrations that I just shared are all happening because of teams, right? So all of these, all of this work wouldn't happen without all of the teams that are doing the work um as part of the Willa community. We have a culture of achievement team, you know, that functions as a student support team that has attendance monitoring, team updates, student referrals and meets bi-weekly. Um, that's run by a school adjustment counselor. We have a literacy data leadership team, um, you know, which is supported by our Desi Early Leadership Grant. We have our Culture of Responsive Staining Pedagogy Champion P L C team, um, we have our PBIS team. We have um our special education planning team that thought about our special education structure and how we'll do um inclusion for next year. Um, we have now an S T Math Championship Team and we're in the process of building our instructional leadership team. And all of these teams have different people and different roles, um, who are owning different aspects of the work. And so it's just exciting to see so many uh Willa staff members owning the work, taking on more leadership responsibility um and leveraging the expertise we have in the community to, to build our capacity. Um, so with that in mind, thinking about the teamwork that's happening um at the Willa, I want to share with you the um priority areas that we have um outlined for um school years twenty-three to twenty-five. You know, and I want to acknowledge that, you know, many of these priorities overlap with, with the school, um, what, what the school is prioritizing prior, leading up to this year. Um, and just thinking about like how the action steps delve deeper um into the work. Um, priority one is focused on um equitable literacy work. Uh, and you'll see that, you know, the action items um for this priority, you know, involve targeted professional development opportunities, analyzing literacy data, um, critically consuming on My View curriculum materials. And really, you know, again, leveraging the resources that we have, um, including our Culture of Responsive Champions, our Desi Early Leadership, Literacy Leadership Grant, um, as well as our Data Leadership Team. Priority area two um is to leverage the diversity and expertise of our community and of equity and inclusion scholarship to promote inclusive, culturally responsive, anti-racist classrooms um in schools for all students. Um, before I go into the action um items, actually, one of the actions, I want to share an anecdote that connects to this. But um one ac- action item is to utilize grade-level standards and aligned assessment system to analyze student data, um, inform practice monitoring through a lens of equity and inclusion. And again, it goes back to my earlier statement that equity really needs to be grounded in inclusion and making sure we have high expectations for all students to meet or exceed, you know, the expectations of, of that grade. The next action step is embedding celebration of minority diversity, racial, cultural, linguistic and gender identities and differences throughout our early childhood community, um, including representation in texts, asset-based language, um, and disability and anti-racist advocacy. Um, I mean, we've already moved um a lot of this work forward this year. We had, um, you know, several community members come into the Willa community, um, you know, including um someone who has a seeing eye dog. Um, you know, who um was able to talk about differences and share about her experience and extraordinary things, um, and ordinary things that she does as someone um who is blind. We also had someone come in and talk about special education, um, and talk about differences and share a read aloud text. Um, and the other anecdote I wanted to share was, you know, thinking about, um, again, all of the ways that our community is diverse and what an asset that is. We had a mom, you know, who collaborated with me, Officer Paguma, um, as well as um a middle school student to uh create a Black History Celebration, you know, focused on athletes and leaders and artists, um, all who are Black and have done excellent things for not only the community, but the world. Um, and so thinking about all of those ways that we celebrate difference uh and talk about difference um and give students an opportunities to um think about um all the excellent people in our community that they can learn about. Um, and that goes into the last action step, which is partnering with families, right, to extend classroom dialogues about racial, cultural, gender and linguistic diversity, um, and seeing families as, as partners in this work. Um, priority three is around social-emotional learning, um, lessons and supports to teach pro-social strategies and skills that promote the well-being of students. Uh, we, as a staff, are currently engaging in safety care training, um, which is focused on de-escalation. Um, you know, when a student is exhibiting challenging behaviors or just exhibiting strong emotions. Also will be utilizing the Second Step, um, Zones of Regulation and Social Thinking Language and Strategies, again, as tier-one um instruction that all students will get. Um, we have collaborate as our Positive Behavior Intervention System Team to promote a sustaining school culture through positive reinforcement. Um, and then lastly, making sure that as we do this work in teams, that the professional development from these teams and then also from our community and outside resources and partnerships are getting to the entire staff. And then lastly, priority four is to promote inclusive family engagement through proactive efforts, critical dialogues, open feedback and affirming relationships, so that all students and families experience a positive introduction to Noah Public Schools. Uh, and this is a new priority uh that's added this year. Um, and in part comes from our Family Experience Survey, which was the first time that we had um that survey given to um our kindergarten families. Um, you may know that the Student Experience Survey exists um through our partnership with Highlander at the um, at the elementary and middle and high school levels. Um, so at the kindergarten level, um, we have data now that's from our families. Um, and so this priority comes from that feedback and is a commitment to making sure that uh families' first experience with Noah Public Schools through us um is one that's affirming, positive and also just listening. Um, because we know that we don't get it right every single time and we want our families to feel like they can share that feedback with us. Um, and that will respond and then do better for the next families um that come through the Willa. And not even wait till next families come to the Willa, but act upon that feedback to do better even tomorrow or next week. Um, so with that, analyzing the Family Experience Survey data, leveraging this feedback from families, you know, to improve our community's engagement efforts. Action step two, um, making sure there are multiple access points, so families feel like they can be, um, you know, involved through being a part of the classroom, volunteering um at school events, um, and celebrating their students. Providing multiple choices for families to visit their children's classroom communities and celebrate not only their students, but their students' learning. Um, I think, uh, again, a, a great example of how this work is already happening is last week, we had our first uh family literacy night. Um, and that was again, um, birthed out of the Family Experience Survey, this school improvement plan and the school council saying, hey, we want to, our families are saying they want more connections to the school. Our families are saying they don't necessarily want to come to another bingo night or have a bounce house, but our families are saying they want to come to school and focus on what students are learning and be able to take from that experience, um, learning that they can do at home. Um, so, you know, through a team effort, there was a pretty amazing um, a family literacy night. And I think, you know, if you build it, they will come. We have um close to two hundred families show up.
Oh, wow.
Um, and the entire um building, you know, was filled with, you know, table games that related to phonemic awareness and read alouds done by our elementary principals. Um, and, you know, just a lot of, um, there was a sensory um space, you know, if there was too much um sensory overload in, in other spaces. Um, there was a Books We Love Mirror wall, so there was um over twenty different things that students could do in the building, outside the building, um, with their families. Um, and they were able to take home a backpack, um, you know, with a new book that they got at the end of the night. But more importantly, a ton of literacy resources that they can take, you know, into the summer, into first grade um or into kindergarten, who we also invited our, our incoming families as well. Um, and then lastly, again, making sure that all of our educators feel supported through the professional learning that we're providing them. Um, and making sure that, you know, as we do this work, we're, we're truly moving together. Um, you know, and understanding that some, um, like our students, right, we're going to differentiate support. Um, and, but provide that support um as needed for all members of the team to, to help us get there together. So with that, um, thank you for listening, um, thank you for, um, you know, engaging in um our school improvement plan. Um, thank you for supporting the excellent work that the Willa is doing.
Thank you very much. Ballier, does anyone have any questions? I'm trying to block you so I can know what the reason is.
Well, I'm gonna ask a question, but we're probably gonna need to get, have, to get like coffee for you to fully answer it, so I'm just gonna put that out there. Um, this is not a budget question. This is just more of reality developmental, where are kiddos, our question. So your incoming kindergartners in the fall, you have five or six, their formative years were through the pandemic. So they were one to two, when the whole world changed. And we know, you love it, Dr. Piggle, you love it. Um, all of us see it in our society. These kids have been impacted. And the research is emerging more and more, their brain development, their cognitive development, motor development, sign and gross, their emotional development, they have been impacted. And we hear how many challenges arise and you have a really wonderful strategic plan, so my question is not to take our school group plan. My question is not to take away from that.
See, you did it too strategically.
Yeah. Um, it's not to take away from the amazing, wonderful work that is in here, but just the additional challenge that is not gonna go away anytime soon. Our incoming preschoolers and kindergartners and then into elementary school for many years going forward have fundamentally been changed. And it's a huge question, like I said, we probably need coffee to really talk it through for hours. But what do you need? What does your staff need? What do our families need? Above and beyond this great plan, there's probably more, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, one part of this plan, right, is, I think, you know, again, I'll come back to teams. Um, there's been a lot of amazing teamwork that's happened this year and, you know, in addition to our Culture of Achievement Team, right, that is looking at student referrals for, hey, like I have um a student with needs and here are all the things I've tried that are not yet working, I'm gonna refer the student to the team. And on the team is our V C B A, under our School Adjustment Council, latest service providers, special education teachers, me. Um, you know, and so having everyone in the room to be able to provide, um, you know, ideas and feedback that has been, you know, new, but definitely instrumental to the work moving forward. But in addition to the Culture of Achievement Team, like, I also think about just the other teams that, you know, don't have a fancy title. It's just a team of people who directly impact this child, coming together. It's just a team of people who directly impact this child coming together in a room and thinking about, okay, what does this child need? What are some strategies that we can talk about to help meet that need? And to be honest, the first meeting doesn't always get there, the second meeting doesn't always get there, but it does get momentum in terms of being on the same page, having some common language, and trying some new things for a student before we jump to, you know, we can't or we won't or, you know, it's just not possible. Because there have certainly been some really challenging moments, and there will be more. But what we don't often talk about is when the moments aren't challenging and you find success in the path forward. It's remember that student that we were talking about every single day for what felt like, you know, five years, but was really, you know, four weeks? You don't hear that student's name anymore. And I think that is the power of working together and also having some common language and some common strategies, you know, which, again, are taking time for us to build. Earlier this evening, right before coming here, I was in safety care training with a team of eight people who were becoming certified for the Willet. And so those eight people, including me, are going to be another team, but have language, common strategies, and common approaches to, you know, de-escalate situations and think about what do we do in the moment, but also what do we do in the next five moments that come after what was a really challenging moment? So I think, to answer your question, I mean, I could say, like, we need six more of School Adjustment Councilors, and I would gladly take them. I'll take four more B C B As. But I do think that there's a lot of power to leveraging the resources we have and building our capacity, mine very much included, to meet this moment. Because, you know, you're right, like, this moment isn't going to go away. And I would argue that it's going to be, you know, not just, you know, our three, four, or five-year-olds, but a whole generation of children. Because just thinking about the secondary impact, right, from a whole generation of adults included in this room who are still not okay as a result of what we experienced and how that adults not being fully okay and structural racism, right, and all of the other isms that we have in our society, like, our kids are drinking that too. And so I think that we need to, again, build sustainable structures, work together and collaborate to figure out how do we move forward for what is, you know, the next generation of a public education. And you're right, I would love to have coffee about what the next generation's public education looks like. But I do think that even at a school level, we can absolutely respond to the moment and support our kids and families.
That's a great answer, and I promise I won't touch, talk much longer, but 30 seconds so far. So a sustainable structure cannot just be in the school system. And something that I so passionately believe in and I will continue to work on as hard as I can is getting this town to grow community resources and human resources. Because we need stronger head start, we need stronger early intervention, we need social workers in town. I could go on and on and on, and I won't, but I just think it's so important that schools are expected to fix everything across all levels. But I just really am cognizant and I care and I worry about our youngest learners. Development is my background and what I do professionally, and I know where we're starting off. And all this amazing work that everybody's talking about and Dr. Galligan shared for our high school starts at the beginning, right?
I would love to see universal pre-K, for example. It's wonderful that my children have the amazing privilege to go to Little Mustangs, and I think that every single child in North Public School has that privilege too. Open cost, transportation, and the list goes on and barriers, right? We know that the rich get richer.
Well, thank you for entertaining my questions, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion to approve? Some of them, by Teresa, second by Joan. All his favor. Or, okay, it's back this time. There we go, all right.
Perfect timing, Kate.
Five to zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Karen.
Thank you.
And last but not least, and we did, I think, did we do this on purpose, working backwards from the high school all the way down?
I'm, I claim, of course we did.
Yeah, there you go. That's the radio.
Well, actually, we say, you know, best for last. So if you have the best job in the district, you know, working with the preschoolers, you get to go last.
You have Dr. Quigley with the LMPAs, through the school improvement. I'm gonna say, Dr. Trey, stay strategic another five times.
Thank you, everyone. I want to thank you for that wonderful setup before I start talking about preschool.
Well, it's a good thing Dr. Bollier went first, because all my questions, you can email me your response later.
I want to thank the committee for an opportunity to speak with you this evening. Our school improvement plan is unusual, because right now, the Little Mustangs preschool is still part of the Willet preschool combination. But we thought it was important, because of the direction that the district is going in, that there is an improvement plan in place that is targeted toward the preschool. The ones over the last several years were covering the preschool and the kindergarten and tended to be more heavily weighted toward kindergarten. So I'll go through just a few brief things. First, the blank page, so you can understand. The data snapshot, as I alluded to, we've been a combined school. There is no disaggregated data for the Little Mustangs preschool academy. So many of these categories, we can't answer, because we can't get it from the state where all the information was submitted. They say, we give it to you for the Early Childhood Center, which is the two schools. We do have the average class size, because we do that in-house. Due to the wisdom of the superintendent and the school committee, we added a staff member. This year, we have a ninth teacher. That means we now have 14 sessions. We opened the ninth class with two students. We now have nine students. It's one of the reasons the mobility question makes a little sense at the preschool, because children enter, especially children with needs, enter when they're three. And for some reason, they're all born in September. So they keep coming even up to next month. We have students that will be coming in for two or three weeks of school. On the accountability measures, Dr. Bollier referenced it a little bit with the accountability measures that exist for kindergarten. Well, preschool, it's basically in-house measures. It's an integrated preschool. Its reason to exist from the very beginning was to service the needs of children who were on IEPs, starting from age three on. It expanded to bring in peers who could work together. So we all know that if you have a mixed community of learners, everyone does better. The peers learn to be empathetic and understanding. The children who are dealing with some deficits, whether they're physical, mental, emotional, get to see other behaviors and say, oh, there is another way to approach this. And it's not just because my teacher is saying, this is the way you should do this. The little boy, the little girl I'm sitting with looks at things differently than I do. So we do do measures, but they're all, you know, what we refer to as, you know, the DDM, District Determined Measures. They were created by the preschool, for the preschool. They do it three times a year, as kids are entering at the midpoint of the year and then again at the end of the year, to see progress in various areas. And then, of course, I believe it's 52%, I might be off a little bit, of the children in the preschool are on IEPs. So their progress is contained in that document as well. The highlights, just very quickly in four areas. You know, the curriculum, the Hagerty Phonemic program was introduced at the end of last year, I believe. This is the first full year that they're using it. And it's, the children love it. They look forward to it. I don't believe, when I was there, I would have looked forward to this program, but they're just so different and so interactive and it's so exciting that they're acting it out, they're singing it out, they're dancing it out, and they're really learning with their whole being, not just, you know, taking things in with their ears. We've taken a relook at handwriting without tears as a pre-writing strategy, because it deals with a lot of OT issues that children have at that age. And it gives a way that we can standardize it across all nine classes, so that everyone is doing the same thing. It doesn't interfere or undermine what comes later in foundations. It just kind of gives a different emphasis, because it's looking at it from OT lens. And the majority of our students need strength and practice in that area. Social-emotional has always been integral to the preschool. So it's woven into everything that's done. We also have monthly assemblies that go on the ABC topic, which is a little bit different than worship over the preschool. You know, always do your best, be kind, and care. And the care means care about yourself, care about your learning, care about your friends, care about your community. It grows throughout the course of the year as it's being presented. We do have an in-house positive behavior system that's based on those ABC values. And the staff develops, has been developing since the preschool existed, more targeted interventions for children, more activities. And lastly, the culturally spent and responsive sustaining pedagogy. Teachers at the LMPA also took the training with Highlander, working on it in a more inclusive and culturally responsive curriculum. We reference it later on. The view, we look at things as, we should have everything looked at as a window and a mirror. You know, the children should see themselves in everything that we're doing, in the text that we use, in the lessons we're presenting. But they also should see through the mirror into a wider world that includes them and everyone else. Into our four priority areas, the first priority is kind of given that we need to create a unique identity for our LMPA as it becomes a separate entity from the Willet. But at the same time, it'll always be a very unique partnership. In other communities where they have stayed-along preschool programs, at the end of the year, their children that are going to kindergarten go to multiple schools. Here, our children, when they leave the Little Mustangs to go to kindergarten, 99% of them are going to the Willet. So it makes sense that we always have very close ties. And we reference that in some of the professional development that we'll be doing. And even the idea of keeping the parents connected through the PTO. That it's kind of a co-PTO rather than a PTO for one year at LMPA or several years, and then one year at Willet. But if we can get people involved for multiple years and all see that everything that's done for all these children is also being done for my child. And that's the view that we take on that. Our second priority is to nurture and sustain an existing culture that is inclusive. As I mentioned, social-emotional learning has always been a strength. It's given the nature of the program since its beginning. The fact that we're dealing with three, four, and five-year-olds who tend to be emotional at times. You know, the child that comes in all upset because on their way to school, something happened. And that sets the tone for the day, except we have a staff that is always ready. And oftentimes, the broken-hearted child that steps on the sidewalk is smiling when they step through the door. And that's true to the people that work in that building. The third priority, and this is a little amorphous at the moment, because we haven't yet finalized some of the programs that will be in place for next year, but to provide multiple meaningful and targeted professional development to the teachers at the Little Mustangs. I do reference a document later I'll talk about just a little bit, which will be one of our main focuses, which also ties into the fourth priority, which is to align the curriculum, instruction, and assessment to meet the needs of all the early learners. And remember, the first priority for many of these children is their IEP. But all of our children are not IEPs, so there is a curriculum. At the moment, it is, I think essentially, it was staff-developed over many years with input from curriculum people and the information that came from the Department of Education that never really targeted early childhood. That's why there's a new document I'll talk about in a minute. So I'm not going to read through these steps to you, because I think you could read them yourself. I do want to highlight, in priority four, we talk about the guideline for preschool and kindergarten learning experience. There was a document, a joint document developed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Department of Early Childhood Education. Unfortunately, they published it in December of 2019. Something happened in the winter of 2020, and nobody really looked at that document. The significance of it is it takes the curriculum documents that were developed K to 12 and targets them for pre-K to K. So that all of the standards are broken down to, this is applicable to preschool, this is applicable to kindergarten. Some of them will say, not applicable to preschool. So it's something staff, we're not going to have to worry about that. They give examples of how it would be instituted in a preschool setting, how it would be measured in a preschool setting. Because, heaven forbid, we have to do M-CAS for preschoolers. But we don't have those kinds of standard measures. But there are ways of standardizing within a program that all children are measured the same way. And in the future, the principal will be able to report to the superintendent, to the committee, this is how our children begin the school year, this is how the children end the school year. And we've watched this program develop over the years, and we've seen, hopefully, the growth, children come in stronger, they leave stronger. You referenced the whole idea of what children are dealing with when they come in. And preschool is surprisingly resilient. And I'm speaking as a grandfather as well as an educator. As long as there is a fertile ground for them when they get here, and I think we have that, and I think it's growing stronger every year. I think the steps that are being taken are going to just reinforce that. And to answer your question before you ask it, yes, we could always use more things.
This is only the second time you've ever met me, and you're already on my brain.
I think, this has always been a personally belief of mine, and I think most people know this, that if we could front-end education with everything that children need, we would have far fewer problems as we go on. But the reality is, you can't do that, because those problems are already there when you get further on. And it's just, how do you get the balance so we start moving more resources to the beginning? So there's a lot of preventative steps taking place, so that we're not dealing with as many difficulties as children get older. I think Michael gave a great example of what's happening, even at kindergarten now, with the programs that they've been able to put in place. And this, as he said, seemed like a five-year problem, turns out to be a couple of weeks' problem. Because the right things were in place. We don't have adjustment counselors at the preschool. And because of the issues that were being dealt with at the kindergarten this year, we, they were there periodically, but not as often as we would have liked. But, you know, those are goals for the future, but I needed to say that. I think it's important that the preschool have a full staff. It's always an issue getting support staff. And, you know, it looks like we're going to be in better shape for next year. Because more and more people are beginning to understand what this is. I think that's one of the roles of the preschool principal director, is to be the voice of preschool. Because I think a lot of people don't understand what the preschool is. They think, oh, it's children playing. You know, it's not childcare, it's preschool. And although it's fun, it's activity-based, it's still part of a pre-K to 12 system. That we want these children who come in at three years old to be walking across the stage with their heads held high, you know, 13 years later. And with everyone, I knew her when, I knew him when, and look where they are now. And I think we're getting those things in place. And I'm not going to say this is the roadmap, I think it's the beginning. I don't know if the superintendent knows this. I only put one year on this. Because I think when the new person comes in here, I think they should look at this as a draft. Knowing that this was put together by, one, an interim principal that was here for two months. With input, thank goodness, from Michael, the preschool, that, the school council that was already in place, and the staff at the preschool. This is not incredibly sitting in this room writing this stuff up. This was jotting ideas, what do you think of this, what do you think of this? This is what I've read, this is what you've shared with me, and this is what we've put together for now. So that's the end of my presentation, I'd be happy to take any questions. If I don't know the answer, I will very bluntly tell you, I don't know the answer.
Thank you very much, Dr. Quigley, I'm going to jump on you. So, no, that actually brings up, thank you for bringing that up. Before we lose everybody, I just wanted to, general note as we look through some of these, that some of them say FY, even like, say FY 23, 24, that were two years. I just want to make sure someone's going to copy edit before they get posted up to the, I think, and it should be FY 24, 20.
I think what happened, not to call anybody out, the Willet used a different version than the others. That's why it says 23, 24. There's a slight difference in template. There was a lot of editing, so I'm sure honest mistake.
But my point, but my.
But that's why it says.
But it shouldn't be, it shouldn't even be 23 through 25, right?
No, it's September 23 through June 25.
Okay, because it says FY in a lot of our templates.
Yeah, I don't think we want to say FY.
Okay, that's what I wanted to, like, copy-edit, like, kind of before we start, before we lose everybody.
I'm sure I have the right template too.
Okay, if I could add just for a second, that this document was put together to be included as part of the early childhood package at the moment. Because although there'll be two principals come July, hopefully, as far as the Department of Education is concerned, it's still one facility.
It's a process.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to like point out the FY piece of it and just making sure our languages are right. And if we want to get rid of FY, then that's totally fine, I just want to make sure everybody's, it's consistent across the, you know, five that were, four and a half that were here, that we're talking about today.
Dr. Thompson, on that logistic little note of like how Desi sees it as one school, what needs to happen or what will naturally happen to separate them?
Well, it's time.
I'd like to make a comment, has there been a vote to separate them? Has the school committee provided direction to separate these two schools?
Just when we voted for the second director, but.
Nope, we voted for an assistant principal.
Yes, and then not.
I don't know.
But we voted for an interim principal.
When the school was moved.
Wait, did we say interim?
This is listed as an assistant principal in the letter I just wrote.
In the what?
In a letter I just wrote.
I'll just, oh.
That we'll be reviewing later.
I thought it was interim too, but in any case, I think we did not say, like, the vote on the separate separation of those programs. I think it was just the role.
So I'd just like to respectfully request that we not assume that this is happening unless there's a direct vote from, a direct vote from the school committee. This is a significant undertaking from administrative overhead that we're placing into a preschool. I'm not sure that that's the best place for our five positions that, and we haven't discussed it as a committee.
Well, we did approve the position.
We approved it.
FY 24 budget.
No, we didn't, it's later on.
No, no, that's the job description, we approved the position and the FY 24 budget.
Okay.
It was one of the five that we went to town meeting.
I still don't think we should be continuing to move forward with these as separate institutions.
Well, that's kind of why I'm asking, like, what is the logistics? Because I, is it like, oh, we now have two principals in an automatic, like, I don't know, so honestly, I'm asking.
No, you have to tell the DSE that there are, wouldn't be two schools. It's a process.
Just put it out here, now that I'm going to vote against the school improvement plan, not because I believe it's the incorrect plan, but because I don't believe we've made a commitment to the strategic direction to go, to move in this direction.
So.
You, I'm one vote, so I shouldn't hold up?
No, 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 no.
Anything if everyone continues on, but I don't, this has moved in a very circuitous kind of route. Where we haven't discussed the fact that what we're actually doing is creating two separate identities, which is what's called out in the school improvement plan, and two separate places.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Oh, well, hold on, because Joan's bringing up a valid point, so we should.
No, no, absolutely, yeah.
No, no, because he's saying much, like, but.
I'll second, I'll second for the purposes of discussion.
Point of discussion, thank you.
Wait, what are we discussing, the improvement plan or what Joan brought up? What are we?
What I brought up is tied to the improvement plan, that's the reason why I will vote no for this improvement plan. Because it reflects a plan that I don't think has been approved. That has been, yeah, approved by the, the school committee in terms of a strategic and financial direction. So that's just my comment.
Okay.
Based on all the conversations we've had, and the adoption of this position, and the discussion of this position in the future, my understanding is that the programs are going to separate because the need is not going to change in terms of the number of that. So that was my, what I took away, but I know that there wasn't a vote. But I, I'm going to move forward assuming that that's, based on the conversation we've had, that's what we are doing or want to do.
It has been a little bit of a convoluted history of the Willet and the LMPA. I mean, even back to 2017 when they were all in one building, under one principal.
This was what I was going to ask.
And that, yeah.
I wasn't on the committee, so what?
So the fall of 2017, when we had the feasibility study, the feasibility study said, hey, you have three problem areas. The Coakley, the Cleveland, and the Willet. And the town decided to reform with the Coakley. And then they were like, the Willet is really busting at the seams, we can't really wait to do anything with that. So it was a very tedious process, I'll tell you all about it offline, if I'm here.
I remember it happening, I just don't remember, my, my specific question is around that, the vote to move them.
So in the fall of 2017, the vote was to remove the preschool out of the Willet so that the Willet had more space and the preschool program could grow. And then over February break, right, Jody? February break of 2018 is when Paul Ricardi was amazing, and the classrooms in this building, and we moved them. When we moved them, it was always a discussion of eventually we're going to need a second principal. And it was always kind of weird, well, now they're in two buildings. And I remember asking you before, Dan, how are they one school if they're in two different buildings? And you're like, well, that's just how Desi recognizes them, and I never really fully understood it. But that's where we.
You have to report and go through a process to change how they.
So that's always what it's been. Now, Joan, understand your confusion, because it hasn't been quite as straightforward, I don't think. Because, Dr. Thompson, you always talked about this added position. Obviously, we approved the interim, very glad you're here, Dr. Quigley. And then even when we went to town meeting, we said, this is a position, we're not yet sure if it's a principal, an assistant principal, or a director. And it's not until tonight on the agenda that we saw that job description. So I do see your perspective.
And we had a principal who, when we moved, when we made that move, because I was on the committee when that move happened.
Yep.
It was very clearly one community, one, one group, one principal who was going back and forth. The reason Mr. Quigley was brought on was because we had one principal going back and forth. So this does represent a significant definitive change without significant. But the bottom line is, is I, I don't, we're not consensus, I don't need to be convinced. My vote is, I just want people to understand why I'm voting the way that I'm voting.
Yeah.
And we can, like, we can move forward, I don't want to belabor the point.
Do you think this is coming back up when we get to the job description?
Oh, yeah, it is.
Because I have more to say, but I feel like it might be more relevant.
So let's talk about it then, I mean, I can be outvoted, that's fine, I just, you know.
No, I think you have all the questions.
Yeah, okay, I think just the.
There's a motion on the table.
There's a motion on the table, yes, no, I know, because I still get to comment. No, my, my only comment on that is, you know, is, and as Dr. Quigley alluded to, this technically Desi would recognize these as the same school improvement plan anyway. But just one is more specific to the needs of the LMPA is how I was viewing it. So that, just wanted to put that out there, that it's, I don't, you know, it is listed as LMPA, but as stated, like, Desi would only recognize it as one, addendum two anyway. So that's where I am on that. Sorry.
No, I guess I just would offer like a friendly amendment that states that, you know, vote to approve this improvement plan to move forward to, I don't know how to word it, but to basically function as, like, an interim guidance, guiding document for the, for the LMPA as it stands now, and to be adopted later. I don't want to lose the, the work that's been put into it.
No, no, that's kind of exactly what I was trying to get at, that approve it as a school improvement plan that is, in a, you know,
Right, for preschool.
Included, you know.
Yeah, these, these plans are internal documents, they do not get filed with, with the department.
Okay.
So this is a, this is not a point we need to spend any time on. So please either approve the plan or don't approve the plan. But I think it's 904, and we need to, we need to move on.
So I'm, I'm going to reject the friendly amendment because the thing on the table was just to approve it, so.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on this? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, did you want to?
Just going to make a suggestion that this be accepted as part of the early childhood school improvement plan.
That was my.
And this is the LMPA section of the early childhood improvement plan.
That was kind of my, like, thought of a friendly amendment.
Somebody on the committee has to make that amendment if they want that to be considered to David as a friendly amendment. And he said no.
Instead of calling it LMPA?
We just want to approve it as is.
I just want to vote with the motion on the table, which is to approve it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, against?
Ben.
So four to one.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, so moving on, so to our next item on the agenda, and thank you to everybody who came in and gave their school improvement plans, have a great night.
Before you move on, just a reminder that these should now be uploaded to the website.
Yeah, that was my, that was my point with the, the copy editing before it gets moved up to the website.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Make sure.
The right gears on it.
Okay, so Dr. Thompson and your report.
Yep. I will try to keep this somewhat brief. So just a quick reminder that the, the next family workshop, the second of three, is next Tuesday, the 23rd. Is on social, emotional learning in the home. There will be a parent square reminder link being sent out soon. I'm hoping that the first of those parent squares will be out the end of this week, but I've been waiting for the link before we do that. Reminder to the committee and to the community that the high school graduation is fast approaching. Class day is the 2nd of June at 1:15, that is a time change due to the time change. And graduation is scheduled for Sunday, the 4th at 1:00 PM. The rain date, if you will, is, is Saturday the 3rd. So if it's going to be a bad day, instead of trying to move it inside, limiting tickets, the, the school has gone with, trying to go a day early, now the whole weekend's a washout then, obviously. We'd have to go inside, but that is, that is the plan. The one-year improvement plans, you've seen those. I asked if there were any specific questions, I did not receive any. I do want to go through a few highlights of those plans first, and you've heard them mentioned earlier. The achievement scores comparing our pre-COVID 2019 to this past year, which was kind of the first semi-normal year. The difference between those numbers is only about five to 10 points in our comprehensive achievement scores. That is lower than the, kind of the universal norm of 15 to 20 points at this point in time. Growth scores are all in that normal range between 40 and 60 across the district, with most in the middle of the high 50s. And again, that growth score between 40 and 60 is considered, you know, a year's worth of growth in a year. This increase in growth scores and gap closing is due to our focus on student achievement data and intervention efforts, which you've heard about in the previous improvement plans that were presented. But that tiered support system, the interventionist, is making a difference and we are seeing it. There's been significant progress in implementing culturally responsive practices. Each school has been working with that, each school has, has, you know, we call them champions, but kind of teachers and resident experts working on that, running staff meetings, supporting others. And that focus is going to continue going forward. We've expanded the use of professional learning communities in our schools. And for the first time, we are working on professional learning communities between schools, specifically the Balch and the Prescott. But I would also mention our instructional rounds and other principals. And we'd like to get where teachers can go to other schools, but we need to be able to bring in more substitutes, there's been a shortage. So that's an area of growth going forward. Again, the effort here is to share best practice and improve our instruction across the district. Social, emotional learning in the district will take a big step forward when we start implementing the Character Strong program next year. That is already in the works and the planning, as you will see from Dr. Weis' professional development plan coming up a little bit later in the program. Middle schools continue to enhance and work on the inclusion model for special education and use more intervention groups. Again, they have interventions as well for its students. And I'm impressed with our school's overall improvement efforts and thank especially the staff and the principals for their continued effort in these areas. And I did send a message out to staff about a week and a half ago saying some of these same, send the same things directly to them, thanking them for their efforts, looking at data, planning interventions, and making a difference in those groups. I will be sending out a district communication survey targeting the beginning of June. That's looking to find out what are, or how do parents want to or prefer to be communicating with. And that's going to be a look at how Parents Square is using and what information there, what tweaks we can make. So that, you know, look for that. Job openings, there are, next year's postings are already up there. We are looking for school psychologists, special education staff, paraprofessional substitutes. I'm really hoping next week we're going to see some of the high, some of the college kids come back and start doing testing. Extended day staff for both summer and fall of '23, and as well as summer extended year program staff. All of those positions are posted on our website. You go to the far right tab, it says career, and it says click here for job postings. And you can click right in there and get into school spring and tell us you're interested. If you are sitting at home in Norwood and you have a nephew or a niece and you know that they would be a good fit, please share this information with us. And that is my update, Madam Chair.
Oh, fabulously quick, Dr. Thompson.
It's the speed read. Just so the committee knows, that narrative that I just gave about the, is, will be, is in the speaker notes as well in the slides, which will get attached. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trying to be efficient, don't tell anybody.
Appreciate it.
Any questions for Dr. Thompson?
No question for Dr. Thompson, I was going to say something, but because of time, I won't. But I just, can I email you something that you then send to Brian and Margot and Diane and Karen?
Yep.
It's all good stuff.
Good stuff is always.
They're not in trouble.
Yeah, nobody's in trouble.
No one's in trouble today. No one's in trouble today.
I'll just email to you, and then if you could please send it on, that would be wonderful.
Right, just me.
Yes, just send it.
Right, just me.
Okay. Um, thank you, Dr. Thompson, and we're going to move right along to our next agenda item, which is budget. Um, and the first item on the agenda for, under budget, is the budget subcommittee update.
So Amory, can we actually let Karen go first? That way she doesn't have to stay on, and then we can loop back to the broader update.
Million percent, yes.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to skip right ahead to, um, the shared cost allocation agreement with the town.
Okay, hi guys.
Hi Karen.
I'm here on the Cape Learning Fair. A lot of things, so I'll be back with, um, lots of information for you. Um, so we can start with the, um, cost allocation agreement. Um, so, uh, the expenditures that the town pays on behalf of the schools, um, they must have this cost allocation agreement proposed. Because I don't know what the cost allocation agreement is, um, in order for those expenditures to be reported at the end of the year, for the end of year report to the Department of Education. Um, after signed by, um, yourself and the, um, town, it has to be sent to the Department of Ed for approval. Um, so each year, we're reviewing, um, this agreement to see if there's any changes that need to be made. Um, and this year, uh, we have reviewed it, um, and we worked with the budget subcommittee and also collaboration with the town. Thank you to John, John, and to Rulo, who was very instrumental in helping with the town. So, so I'm just going to go over some of the changes that we're making with this, um, agreement. Um, so in the, um, general administration, um, services area, um, so that's the business and finance area. So in the old model, um, agreement that we had, it was a formula, um, that both sides, both counties, school, um, felt that should be a little more simplified. Um, so, uh, we decided to go with, um, an average percentage to use rather than, uh, that formula. Um, and looking at the last few years, the average was, uh, in the low 30s. Uh, so we came out with a 35% um, that we were going to be used to be, for the allocation of the count, the town accounting and finance department salaries, as well as 35% for the information technology salaries. Um, so rather than the formula, this makes it really easy for, um, the town and school, uh, to come up with that number. Um, we felt, felt it was a fair, um, percentage, and, um, I did discuss this with the town and they felt the same. Um, the human resources area is staying the same. Um, and when we went to the shared, um, HR, um, we had both determined that we would, um, they would charge one human resource generalist, the one that works with school, and so that actual salary would be the shared cost. Um, that would be part of this cost allocation agreement. Um, the operation and maintenance of plants, um, this is remaining the same. Um, which, uh, refresh your memory, um, that is the actual costs, um, for the facilities, that is the school side, with the exception of, there's a 50-50 split, um, with the town and school on, on the shared, um, salaries for the townwide facilities director, assistant director, the business manager, budget analyst, and the craftsman. Um, so that remained the same. Uh, the benefits area, um, that changed because there, again, there used to be a formula in that, um, and we wanted to be the actual, based on the actual costs of, um, for the employment and time contributions. I'm told they'll give, be giving me a report with the actual cost of the school retirement contributions. Um, the, we want to, uh, the insurance for the actual employees. Um, this is, has been a small change in that. We're going, it's the actual cost for the school employees, um, real term. However, the state does not allow you to put any employees that are now paid by the town side. Well, the facilities and the human resource generalist cannot be counted in this. So those cannot be counted in this, but we have noted that in this new agreement. The, uh, non-employee insurance, um, uh, that has been basically the same that it was in the last agreement, where they have to give us the actual for that. Uh, fixed cost is, is again, the same, the actuals of the school pricing guards. Um, the debt retirement portion is again, the same. Um, they're giving us the actuals of the debt and the interest and, um, for all that construction and the loans with the insurance. Uh, the expenditures for that debt would be the same. And finally, the payments to other districts would be the same. Um, and that would be more like, um, the payment, uh, pay, that's not the added district tuition. That's more payments to other districts that we get from the state, so that would be added there. Um, so, um, in your packet, you have, um, the cost allocation agreement with these changes in place. And this agreement would start July 1st of 2023, um, and it would, it doesn't have an end date, because the only way that it would have to be changed and signed again is if we felt like it needed to, it needed some changes. So once, uh, if we're tenet, the school committee, the general manager, and the board of selectmen chair will sign it, unless there's any changes, this agreement would stay in place. So, um, in that.
Yeah, Dr. Thompson.
Does anybody have any questions on it?
Um, Karen, I just want to point something out. Um, the edit that Karen made earlier today did not make it into the packet, so I just forwarded to everybody. It's very minor. She just read it, but if you look at the packet, you won't see it. If you look under the 5,000 code, under 510, employee retirement contribution, um, she added the bullet that says that FICA and Medicare are based on actual cost. So I just want everybody to see that that was added. Somehow it didn't make it into the packet, but she did just read it.
That was in it before. For some reason, that line got deleted and it should not have been included.
Yeah, I know. I just wanted them to make sure that what they heard you say.
Right.
I, I just forwarded, so now they can actually see it and write it.
So with that, um, is there any questions on it?
Anybody have any questions for Karen?
So we'll make that motion to approve?
Move for Teresa. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Kate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so it passes five to zero.
And then, Amory, will you just, um, encourage the board of selectmen to vote on this soon?
I will do that.
And Amory, I did send this over to John.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll, I'll make sure I speak with him, so I'll make sure that he has.
Yeah, if you can make sure that, Mrs. Sheridan, if you can make sure the right version is sent to.
Yeah.
Priscilla to have printed and sent over, that would be great.
Sure.
Because even though I sent them the right one. Oh, you just didn't get it signed.
Yeah.
Anyway. Okay, great. So that is all set. Um, so then we'll go to the rental fees and rental policy.
Uh, right, and again, uh, the use of facilities policy guideline. Um, so again, we did a, really did read that for that, um, in the previous years, and we're just supposed to review it each year to see if there's any changes that needs to be made to it. Um, I, we had, again, collaboration with the town on this. Um, I work with Paul Riccardi, Director of Facilities. Um, and basically, there's some minimal changes of, um, with some of the fees. Um, so I'm going to go over some of those. Uh, so the bulk of the increases, you have a, um, sheet in your packet that says recommended changes, um, to the North Public Schools' use of facilities fee structure. Um, so the bulk of them was a two-point, we added 2.5% increase to the majority of the fees, with the exception of the salary charges. Now, in the policy, the salary charges are supposed to be based on the act, the average of the actuals um, for the custodians and the grounds. Um, so I did get those salaries from the facilities department. Mary O'Brien, O'Brien gave me those. And so those, um, changes are based on the actual, the regular and overtime rates. Um, the tech house manager and the auditorium house manager, um, we increased that. It was $35 an hour in the previous, um, policy. And then we increased it to $36 an hour, and that was, um, 2.86% increase. Um, the, the other thing to note was, um, you'll see some, on the new raise, some NA, um, not applicable. So, um, after discussion with Paul Riccardi, he felt like some of these fees, um, they've no longer even rent them out anymore. It's really should be eliminated from this policy. Um, so you can see some of them, but one was like, um, a bathroom, 136 and 140, and some things that we both agreed should be taken out of this policy. Um, the other thing in your packet is, um, on this second tab of that worksheet, is that, there's three leases that remain, um, in the schools, and that is Head Start, um, and Self-Health is one, um, WIC is another one, and the Norwood Basketball Association. Um, so Paul Riccardi has already negotiated a lease for the Head Start and Self-Health. Uh, so for the three-year lease, there was a 3% increase, um, for the first two years and 3.5% on the third year. Um, and WIC is currently, has one more year on that, um, lease, so that was an increase of 3% uh, this fourth year coming up. And the Norwood Basketball, Basketball Association, um, is still in negotiation, so I don't have the final on that one. Um, and those contracts, um, the two contracts that I mentioned that were already negotiated, um, have already been signed, and, um, I have received a copy of those from, um, Mr. Riccardi. So with that, if anybody has any questions?
Any questions for Karen on the rental fee and rental policy?
No questions. Just so everybody knows, we did review the SS subcommittee as well, went through the, the fees, agreed with Ms. Sheridan's and then Mr. Riccardi's recommendations. Um, and we do have to review this every year, so if we approve it, then this policy will be updated, um, in our manuals and online effective July 1st.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by David. I see Jones' hand seconded by Joan. All those in favor?
Aye.
So it passes five to zero. And thank you so much, Karen, for dialing in.
Um, I, I want to just mention one of the seminars that I went to today, which is kind of interesting, because, uh, it was a seminar on tips on teaching adults. So I got a lot of tips from my workshop, uh, budget workshop.
Tips on teaching adults.
We'll need some tips on teaching adults about budget.
There's a big difference between teaching adults and children I have found from my work.
It's probably easier to teach children.
There's a field. There's a whole field.
Other things, right?
I took notes for you all, so I'll be typing them up and bringing them to you.
You can, you can send them to me. I'll look if I'm a bit late if you want.
I know, they'll, they'll probably be useful. Okay, awesome. Thank you, Karen.
All right, see you guys.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Bye.
Okay, bye. So we let Karen, because she, she can be, go on her way and do her, uh, her conference. Um, so back to budget subcommittee update.
Yeah, so I had it open and I closed it. When did we meet? When did we meet last? Sometime last week or?
Uh, it's all kind of melding together.
Uh, we recently met. And at that meeting, um, went over everything that Karen just shared with you, um, also talked a little bit more about the extraordinary relief, which you've already been informed that we are getting, but we have received it now in the amount of $578,386. Um, you may remember in Karen's quarterly report, she was talking about how, um, we just approved removing 150,000 out of the Special Education Reserve Fund, and she was saying we may need to, um, remove another 150,000. Um, but now with this extraordinary relief, if the full committee agrees with the strategy of the budget subcommittee, we want to utilize this and keep that 150 in the Special Education Reserve Fund if possible.
Utilize that extraordinary relief?
Yes, because we have to anyway. It has to be expended by the end of the school year. Um, so use this first, hopefully keep that 150,000 in the Special Education Reserve Fund as long as we can.
Yeah.
Uh, so that was just one thing we talked about. Um, as we've been, you know, referencing in the last couple of meetings, um, just trying to streamline and work, look at all the work that's ahead, priorities and goals. Um, there's a document that I sent out to you last week. It's in the packet. Um, just for your, you know, FYI, right now, we're still working on it as a subcommittee. Um, but as we've been saying, there is quite a lot of budget work ahead. Um, so this document that I created, I was just taking from the different budget conversations, different school committee types of conversations, strategic planning, and trying to start to get it all into one document. Um, we've got the regular budget work that we do all the time. We have, you know, starting to think ahead to FY '25 and beyond, and resuming work with the budget balancing committee. Um, we have the task ahead of, um, the middle school that opens in September '25, which is great, um, but does require some time and analysis soon of how is that being staffed? And then, you know, this work obviously overlaps with the elementary study and how are we going to staff and, and operate our elementary schools? Um, for those of you who are at town meeting, you know that there were some questions around special education. Um, so we do think we need to do some analysis around that. Um, you know, Gloria has been great with reports and keeping us updated. Um, but the five-year plan that she last gave us has drastically already changed. So she is planning to work on another report she had mentioned to us. Um, hopefully she'll come this summer, um, to give us an update. Um, but really needing to look at not only where are the programs housed in district, and does it make sense for them to stay where they are? Um, but also, we're getting a lot of questions from the finance commission and town meeting around or out of, out of district students. Um, so as budget subcommittee, we were starting to talk about, do we need to do an analysis of how could we, how would we bring people back if we could? But that's going to be a process, probably of identifying the space challenges, the budget challenges, but just starting to have that analysis of if we could, what would it take? And then being able to say to town meeting, this is what would be necessary to bring programs back in. Um, other work ahead, um, as we all know, there will be union negotiations starting up in the fall with both Unit A and Unit B. Um, so there's some budget analysis that needs to start taking place for that, as we get ready for that in the fall. Um, and then just as we continue the strategic planning, you know, how that fits the budget. Um, obviously, I asked tonight a lot of budget questions with the school improvement plan, understanding how those hit the budget. Um, and then we've been talking a lot about, you know, communication and collaboration with our town counterparts, some things that we would like to work on. Um, Board of Selectmen and FinCom, and then, um, community, um, communication and engagement, helping the community understand the budget. Updating the budget timeline and putting out a budget book. Um, there is a lot on here.
Yeah.
It is not all feasible. This is just everything that we've been talking about, um, and we need to work more on streamlining the planning. Uh, so that's the high-level overview. And we meet again next week sometime. I'm really bad with dates at the moment.
I know.
I usually know my calendar back.
I say, I just pulled up the calendar too, because I was even just trying to see when our next capital outlay is.
We meet one day next week. It is posted. And there is an agenda, and the goal of that meeting is really looking at.
It is the 24th.
24th, okay. It is looking at this document and trying to figure out a little bit more how we want to parse it out, and then, of course, we will bring it back.
Amory, do you want me to do policy real quick? Because it overlaps with, sort of connects to that document that Teresa created. I don't know why I'm after old busi- why we're after old business, but either way, it's fine. I just, it, it kind of is a continuation of the conversation.
So budget used to be after old business too, and we pulled it up because we were getting the budget link at this time of night. So it, we should maybe at another meeting think about that, maybe budget, then policy, then old business?
Yeah.
It really, it, it's not a big deal just for continuity of the topic.
Um, if you don't mind, I, it, my capital outlay is only literally like two minutes.
Okay, cool. No worries.
Unless anybody has any other questions for Teresa.
But if there's anything on that document that you do want us to discuss further in the subcommittee, just email me by Monday, and then I'll make sure I bring it to the attention of the subcommittee.
Okay. Um, so the next item was the capital outlay update. I just, I actually had this meeting before our last business meeting, but I wasn't there to tell you about it. Um, so the last time we met, um, was on April 24th. Um, and, you know, we had a, uh, basically, the capital outlay committee wants to kind of do what we've been talking about with budget balancing and just meet more consistently throughout the year. Um, so that it's not just a, all of a sudden, the, um, fall town media is coming up and we need to approve capital, um, items and just be a little more cognizant of how it fits into the entire budget. Um, so we did meet and we did a field trip. So we went down to the, um, Hawes Pool, um, and toured that to look at what, you know, was being proposed there, because it is a 70-year-old pool that leaks like a sieve. Um, and then we looked at the bridge on Washington Street that's also getting it done. We did have a discussion, FYI, about, um, how that plan and the bridge and the middle school are going to impact things, and we just, you know, we're, um, reiterating to, um, DBW and Mark Ryan, that there should be a lot of thought put into, um, traffic patterns and disruptions and, you know, lots of, um, if there's machinery getting pulled in here and it's rattling the crap out of, you know, a new pool being held up, just to be cognizant of that. I don't think they're all, they're not all slated to be at exactly the same time. I don't think they're all, they're not all slated to be at exactly the same time. Just based on when we get feasibility and things like that in. But, and then we went over to the DBW yard and just looked at a couple of the capital trucks that they're looking to purchase. They obviously have their rotating stock in the fleet budget lines that have been moved into the operating budget. But some of the much bigger trucks that would need to be purchased as capital. And then we just went back to Town Hall and talked about, we specifically, those were a town meeting, heard that we rescinded some funds that we had previously allocated to the Civic Center lobby. And then it went, yeah, and then it went to, it went to the locker room. It was, it is a, you know, travesty that the men's locker room looks really, really great and the women's locker room looks like we just kind of, you know, slacked together with some concrete. So, you know, it is, but there was way more to the decision than that. So that we did hear from the new Director of Recreation about why. Not only the money, but why. And then we did schedule another meeting, and I got to tell you, I didn't write it down. I was waiting for my email from the town and when the next one is. But it is coming up, and I will let you know when it is and put it in the school committee calendar. But that is it. Any questions about capital?
Thank you.
Okay. Do you, so having said that, and to Kate's point, is anyone okay with pulling policy up? Is that okay with the committee? Okay.
Okay, great.
So we'll pull policy up and let Kate, you can go ahead with the update.
All right, so we met on May 11. And just to follow up on a couple of items that I've, we've been keeping you guys filled in about the PTO, to skip around from what you see if you're looking at this document. The PTO survey is, I created a starter template for Dr. Thompson and Dr. Taylor to do with what they please, but it's to condense some of the information that we're looking for to give to principals and PTO presidents at the beginning of the year based on the conversations we've had around KCD. And the next step is that Dr. Thompson is going to be meeting with principals about and get input and then finesse the template again. And then we'll, you know, it's sort of an iterative process, right, to where we want it to be. And so we'll keep you filled in on what that's looking like once it's more, a little more ready to go. Our goal is that it's some, a finalized version would be ready to go for next school year that we would then use as a school money for a review document. I was thinking that I would follow up, I did, this isn't in the notes, but with the PTOs, just to let them know kind of status since they might not hear from us for a while, that we told them something was coming. So I intended to do that. And if that makes, if that's kosher with you, Dr. Thompson, I can copy you.
Yep, if you want to, if you want to write something up, we can probably have, she has all the PTO ad email addresses if that's helpful.
Yeah. I need to get up to speed with the Student Advisory Council work, which Anne Marie and Teresa have been doing. I'm going tomorrow with Teresa at 10:30, 10:22.
10:22 to 11:19.
Yeah, so wind block it in. And the goal here for Policy Subcommittee is just to formalize our, it already exists, I noticed, in new adoptions. But we want to formalize what it looks like more in terms of how, how it rolls out. So we talked about in this meeting some of the things about a long-term agenda. That is a document in progress that I didn't share with you guys for tonight's packet because I need to put it together a little bit more. But basically, we talked about these points, and then I'm looking at our wider long-term agenda. And then I'm trying to, I also made a priorities document draft, which you guys do have, that was in response to, or is meant to align with what's happening with the Budget Subcommittee as those are our major committees that we're responsible for. What I tried to do a little bit was see where, I made a couple of comments for that, to see where things could maybe be taken off that plate because it seems heavy on budget for all of the reasons. So again, that's a work in progress. But if you guys have any input on that, when you get a chance to look at that priorities document, I would love to get any notes you have. And I guess that goes into my suggestion that if we're going to use those as guidelines, we get those, we can get those narrowed out, narrowed down a little bit more before we really dig into our goals. I guess what I'm suggesting is maybe potentially putting that off again.
I'm already shaking my head.
Well, just because we're kind of, I feel like we're sifting things down by clarifying the committee work. And then I'm kind of done with the summary on that. Oh, no, there's a Memorial Day, a memorial policy that I've done, or reached out to MASC to see, to get some input, some sort of advice on parameters for the memorial policy. In the context of a bench for Tyler Lawrence that will be outside, we feel like it's okay and we would approve it, that we would be in favor. It's sort of already in progress, but that it doesn't conflict with our policy because it addresses things that are inside. But it seems like a real technicality. So what, what I've done is reached out to MS, to Dorothy, MASC. I really slowed down at a certain point at night, I know we all do, to get advice on, you know, not hemming ourselves in, but leaving room, you know, and not having it be sort of a nightmare of like exceptions and, and things like that. So that's, that's where that stands. And the other thing that I was gonna, I knew I would forget it if I skipped around. Oh, the engagement piece. As I was putting together the priorities document, it occurred to me, since engagement is more of an overarching goal for everything that we do or could be, I wanted to, as we think about our goals, back up my earlier proposal from a couple of months ago to offer that what, I understand that nobody wants more work and more meetings and more committees. And though that wasn't, that was sort of a brainstorm and it wasn't meant to be a long-term subcommittee, if we want to look at engagement as, you know, just an added goal in each of our main subcommittees, I think that would make sense too. So just food for thought in that. So as it relates to policy as well, we could hone in on like engagement around policy and community. I think that's it. Do you guys have any questions?
Just some quick feedback. There's definitely some things that we'll, with budget policy, be working on like from different angles.
Right.
And I'm sure you're all tired of me talking about alignment, but I feel very strongly it all aligns. So maybe, I don't know, is Jamie putting together the start of the next long-term agenda for next school year?
I've started work on that.
Can that be shared out because we'll need to like populate it for subcommittee stuff?
Yes, I think that should be a June project, second, when we reorganize.
Well, no, I, I would say as the budget chair, I'm putting in so much time on this.
No, I, I know, but I think that if we're reorganizing, I think that as that document is usually sort of managed by the chair, that we should wait until we reorganize and...
No, we always start that document like in each way.
Start, but I, I just think that that should be a thing.
Are you saying just to like put, start loading it and then you can, then it would be organized and finalized at, at Jamie?
Yeah, I think if there's a document started, before we all start our own version, it should be shared out and we can start to populate it. It's obviously up for discussion.
It's not just, I don't, I'm not the only one that puts in...
I, I understand that there are three meetings left with, before we reorganize. And I would, I would advocate for that because we also have two meetings over the summer. But that's just my thought.
So I'm going to make a motion that somebody start an official long-term agenda template that can be shared out to the rest of the committee.
Because right now Jamie has actually put June and, July and August on this one, which shouldn't go on there.
Amendment motion, if you were friendly that you start it.
Oh, I can, I can absolutely start. I have absolutely no problem with that. If that's okay with you.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if we, I mean, really, when I say start it, just like get the dates on.
Yeah, yeah, and I actually, when Jamie said she did that, I actually was going to say, when we get to long-term agenda, I intend to break that off.
Yeah, I was looking at the same thing when I was doing.
And you could, and you could ask her to just put the dates into a new document.
Yes, exactly.
One date here, so.
So that we can start populating it.
Starting with July and then...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and just to remind Karen.
She's also going to make the new folder for next year, and I asked her to number it.
But to David's point, we don't necessarily have to put it on the agenda until after we get through the next...
It will be in, it'll be in the, in the June, one time in June because as per our policies, we review it once a month, monthly. But it's, it's usually a quick review, but yeah.
All right, so I made a motion. I think David had a friendly amendment. What was the amendment? I didn't fully read it.
Just that I, I start.
So I'll, yeah, I'll say that.
I second the motion. I second.
Okay, all's in favor. Okay, yeah, that's no problem. I can, as soon as, yeah. I just, someone asked in Jamie out of those dates, and I just didn't have a chance to email her and say, no, 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 new one, new one. Okay, so do we want to just finish out policy with the legislative advocacy since we're there already?
Yeah, it's not, it's not too much tonight. Just, I don't know if everybody saw, but we did get a response from Representative Rogers about our first legislative advocacy letter around like the funding. Not sure where the hiccup was, but unfortunately, he got the letter a little too late to do some of the advocacy that we asked him to do. But he is willing to talk about some of the other aspects and extended an invitation to meet. I am certainly willing to meet with him. I checked with Ms. Smith, and she and some union reps are willing to meet with him. Who else wants to be part of the coordination of meeting with Representative Rogers? Or do you want me to work with Ms. Smith and do the lead on that?
No one's going to say no if you want to do it.
Well, who else wants to be part of the conversation?
I can be part of the conversation. I probably, yeah.
Yeah, it depends on when it, it depends on when it takes place.
Okay, okay. So Kate and Joan potentially, I'll keep you in the loop because he did want to talk through some of the things. And then just a reminder, we did write that letter advocating on the Thrive Act. So I don't know if that's been sent yet, but if not, please sign it and get it out.
Yeah, I'll do it on my way out.
Okay. And then maybe this can just be an item that's on the next agenda and, because it's late and we still have an executive session, we can talk about more things next. But those are the two pieces I want to take that one.
Any questions on that? Okay. Okay, so moving back to old business. So obviously, as our per hour policy, long-term agenda is on here. I think we just covered it, if I'm being honest. But for the most, if anybody, you're right, we only have three meetings left. If anybody sees anything that's coming up that's not there, I think it got cleaned up a little bit today. Jamie did some cleaning up. I think there is still some things that might need to get shifted around. I, the last time we, when we put this agenda tonight together, I was actually shifting some things around. Some things were on there because we weren't sure if all of the principals would be ready. So SITs were in two different places. So I think that may or may not have gotten cleaned up, but I'll definitely take a look at that. But unless anyone has anything specific they want to talk about...
Just take Tom off our next agenda because he's...
I left him on there because I said I needed to verify with, with Karen whether, yeah, whether that was done and dusted. Okay. I will make myself an open up. Okay, anything else? Awesome. I'd love to hear it. Okay, so that brings us to elementary subcommittee update.
Okay, take the lead. So we met on Tuesday for about a half hour. We do not have the minutes done yet. I have them. I just have to put them in nice form. So what we did, we conducted regular business, approved meetings for March. Our biggest update was that obviously we weren't article passed from town meeting, so we have the money to conduct said study. Our conversation sort of jumped back to a pillars document. So this was recommended by the principals in December, January of elementary. I started that. Kate, Dr. Taylor, Dr. Thompson had an opportunity to review it, offer feedback. And then Dr. Thompson, Dr. Taylor, you have that and are taking it to the elementary principals tomorrow. Can you meet with them?
Yes.
Lovely. So, you know, our hope is, is that that will be reviewed. They'll offer feedback. Sort of the goal is a one-pager, and the goal of the pillars document is when we go to select a consultant group for this, that that is sort of something we can hand to them with the RFP that sort of gives a snapshot of the community goals, focus, just information that any outside group coming into Norwood working with us would have. So that is important. It is not linked there. But I figured I would wait until elementary principals review it, and then I can share that with the committee and make sure it's there. We also talked a little bit about sort of next steps in drafting the RFP. Sort of how we left it is that Dr. Thompson and Ms. Sheridan will do some work in their respective fields, whether it's the listserv, whether it's other superintendents, sort of talking about that. We, very briefly, which will be kicked to the next meeting, talked about a longer timeline in terms of what does the work look like? We sketched something out where, you know, what we, as that subcommittee, think would try to have a draft ready to go early in September. So that could go out to bid and sort of go from there. But sort of, again, feedback from the people that are driving, even the administrative team side is, you know, they wanted to gather a little bit of information first. And then sort of the last thing with that before the next meeting date, you know, is our, our big thing here, and I think that this has really come into focus over the past couple of months with this meeting, is that the purpose of the elementary study committee as currently constituted is to gather data and to put together a plan for when we move into the new middle school on the elementary side. Because those, most of our buildings will be losing fifth-grade classrooms, and we need to look at what is that impact going to be? We maybe had an idea in 2017, 2018 with the feasibility study, but obviously, things change. So now what is that going to look like in 2025? And provide that roadmap. There may be other things that come off of that, other long-term planning things that, you know, can be kicked back to the committee or, you know, to the appropriate sort of bucket to have conversations with that. But, you know, I think that has become very, very clear in these meetings in sort of the pillars and the feedback from principals and going from there. And there's, there's a lot there. That seems like a simple question, but there's quite a bit there. And then our last thing, before I kick it to Kate, see if I've lost anything. We do have our next meeting date. That should be posted by the end of the week. That will be Thursday, June 15, 2023 at 10:30 a.m. And the reason it can be at 10:30 a.m. is because in my world, we will not have students that day. That will be our first day of summer vacation. So that will be our next meeting. And again, they're previewing. We'll have a pillars document. We'll sort of begin to sketch out a more firm timeline. Hopefully get, garner some info from Karen and Dave on the RFP and begin those next steps. Kate, have I missed anything?
No, I think that's a great synopsis. Madam Chair, if I may though, I wanted to say that we did move the Policy Committee meeting from the 8th to the 1st so that we can review the CMS handbook before our next full committee meeting. So the next time policy meets is June 1 now. And we will have the CMS book, I think, by the end, really soon, end of this week.
What is that, elementary handbook?
Elementary handbooks are...
I think that is...
Later.
Yeah.
The second meeting in June.
Yeah. I think they're, yeah, waiting to get to the, the second one.
Okay.
If it happens to come earlier, it's a surprise. Hugh is definitely an overachiever. I mean, we'll, we'll obviously try to review it at a meeting before. When's our, God, I'm sorry. When's our next meeting is?
The 7th.
June 7.
21st. I knew that.
Okay. No, I was just actually making, I was doing a back calculation to make sure that meeting on June 1, we would still be able to get into the packet in time for Fridays. I just wanted to make sure. I was like, oh, God, did we just change our meeting? And it actually wasn't even like for a purpose because it wouldn't have been enough time.
Can I ask two questions on the elementary study?
Yes.
So if the RFP doesn't even get created until September, when are we hiring and starting the work with a consultant?
Our goal is that we, one, figure out more information for those steps, but two, assume that that work is going to take place between September and January.
What work between September and January?
That the consultant does their work and does their analysis.
Yeah, so I have sent out requests for other people who have done this. I've gotten about three. I have not had a moment to read them yet. But I have learned that there are some organizations on the state bid list, which means you wouldn't have to do an RFP. So I think I'll be, hopefully we'll be in a position, my plan is to be in a position to advise the elementary study committee on the timeline once I've seen some of that, and I will share that information with them that I have that I'm still collecting, so.
So I under...
So if, so worst-case scenario, we would probably write an RFP over the summer, maybe get it out in August, be able to make a selection in September, move it up a little bit. But again, I have not read these reports that people have shared with me, so I'm guesstimating.
Will Kate, your subcommittee help with that? That's why you have a subcommittee.
Yes.
Yeah.
June 16th, we'll know more.
Right.
Because they're tasked with gathering information.
I have not looked at them. Once I get all of them, I will share them. We will, I, I would recommend to the committee that we discuss it at that point, but it, you know, so depending if we had to do an RFP or not, depending on who's in the state bid list or not, uh, if it's not, it's a shorter process. If it's not, if we go with an RFP because the state bid list doesn't match what we want to do and the complexities here in NOR, which I strongly suspect would be the case, um, then, you know, I would work with Karen and get a draft written over this.
So I'm just concerned with the overlap of the other work. So if we don't even start to know the, um, what's the word, the recommendations until January, we already know there's things that we want to try to get into FY25 for the middle school. And also, we are going to be having ongoing union negotiations. I, I've been saying this for about a year. I really think we're behind on this work.
But you're, the fifth grade is not going to move for two years. So if you have a year to study, then you have a year to plan.
But we don't have a year to plan because there's ramifications to budget that we'll be working on starting in December. And there's ramifications to a contract that we're starting negotiations in September.
Yeah, I'm not, well, again, you're making a leap that there's going to be significant budget improvement from a reorganization. If a reorganization, so, so you're making several leaps. One i- is the recommendation is reorganize, you know, the second is that it would be budget, have a heavy bu- budget impact. We don't know that yet.
I'm, I'm not making a leap, Dave. I'm basing off of the stuff that we already documented in the educational plan.
Though, tho- those are staffing things for the middle school.
Not just the middle school. In the visioning sessions, it was called out that there were certain things that we had to look at in the elementary schools. Even if we do nothing, if we keep the Willett and the five elementaries, we still need to figure out the staffing for special ed and for specials. We can't wait. We are behind.
Are there, are there scenarios we can, that, that we know are likely, that we can, you know, work approximate while, while the, the process is being, you know?
I mean, I, I, my perspective, I think we need to know tomorrow what the scheduling is for the Coakley. No, no, for Coakley. So we can at least plan out that portion because we know grade five is going there. If we can get that started, I will feel a little bit better. But I still think not knowing until January the recommendations of a consultant. I thought we were getting recommendations in the fall. That was, was, what was discussed before.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't see this work starting until the fall. I mean, even if you, even if you had a consultant, they're not going to be able to study how the schools are working until the schools are open.
You were thinking we'd get the word from town meeting and put an RFP out over like, like?
July was the discussion that we had before.
That was the discussion. And then there was a suggestion that we talked to the elementary principals, which took December and January, and then we jumped into budget and we're working. I, I hear what you're saying. And, and also like the question could be asked then, why didn't we start this a year ago?
I've been saying to start this.
This is, this is our reality and we're going to do the best we can. And I hear what you're saying, but we're, we're working as fast as we possibly can. And you're not wrong, but I, I don't know.
I've just been, I've been very candid and I, and, and we not have to talk about a lot, but I've been very candid in more than one meeting that we are not aligning our work. And I foresee a lot of disasters ahead if we don't figure out the alignment.
Yeah, so we're.
Maybe we'll know, we, we can get more information from this and then we can know what's feasible in terms of moving a timeline up. Based on.
Yep.
What those other places are doing and.
Right, but I, even if, even if we were talking to a consultant tomorrow, I'm not sure that they're in a position where they are going to start on this until September. So that's just, I would be shocked if someone was going to start. They might be on board in August, but the work would start in September. That's just my gut feeling. Again, part of the reason for asking for a consultant is this not work that I have done before. And this is a very complex district.
We need to know more. We need to know how long it takes.
I mean, I looked, I looked quickly at one, at one district, but it had four buildings. So it's.
Well, my concern is to document it, but then I also have a request and a reminder. All subcommittee work is supposed to be, um, transparent and accessible to the full committee. Any work that you review in a subcommittee should be in the subcommittee folder so that we're all aware of what you're looking at. So if that pillars document could please be added?
Yes.
ASAP?
You listened to my update. I said that they were going to do that.
I heard you, David. I am saying that if you reviewed it in a subcommittee, it needs to be accessible to the full committee immediately. That is meeting law and that is per our protocols.
Um, another question about that, um, you said you were putting together the minutes?
Yes.
Has Jamie not been able to join?
No, she was not there this past month.
Okay, we couldn't get Donna or somebody to step up?
Donna was not there either.
Not there or not able is what I'm asking.
Not able.
I just want to make sure that we, you know, we're utilizing Jamie.
No, totally. And this was, I think, the first time, the second time it's happened in six weeks. So it happens.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're doing our best to have somebody impartial who's not actually in the, um, because we know when we're actually part of the conversation, how hard it is to take notes. Okay, all right. Um, any other questions on this? Any other discussion? Okay, I think we should move on. Um, so the next item is the school committee goals. Um, I'm going to suggest right off the bat that we just scrubbed this from the, yes, Joan?
I'd like to make a motion that a, that a subcommittee be pulled together to work on this, um, taking all the input that we've had so far from the committee and bring back a draft to the committee. And I volunteer to chair that subcommittee.
I love it. I will join her.
And Teresa, I was the second on that subcommittee. As I, 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 I'm, that helps me a lot, not just indefinitely postponing it.
Well, rather than scrubbing it, I'm wondering if that would be an.
I want to scrub it. I just want to scrub from this.
An acceptable alternative.
We're, we're pretty busy tonight and I was going to scrub it from this discussion because I just don't think that we can get it done in, 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 uh, one of these meetings.
Yeah, and I can be a third, are we allowed to have three? No, you can have three. I was going to say, um, just to represent policy, but I'll just share the stuff that I.
I think that would probably, so.
You already have it.
Uh, what?
When's the next policy meeting? Subcommittee meeting?
Wait, 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 wait. Second for a point of discussion.
Sorry.
Does somebody want to stick out?
I'm saying it's second and I would.
Okay, okay, thank you. Proceed.
When's the next policy subcommittee meeting?
Uh, on the first, June 1st at 10:00 a.m. So Joan, I was, I think maybe, I mean, I don't know your schedule, but mine's kind of already full of all the school committee stuff. So maybe if we bring it back, the June 21st meeting? Or have it been June 7th?
Yeah, I was going to say we could try to get copies or solicit input from both of the subcommittees.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best way to do it, definitely.
And then we can come back with a, we'll get a, we'll solicit from the elementary subcommittee as well and we'll come back with a draft. Rather than trying to keep trying to hash it out in the big group.
No, I think that's a, I, I, thank you for volunteering for that because I do actually really think that's a great idea.
And then by, Dr. Thompson, when is the strategic planning report to the school committee? Is it our first June meeting?
Um, probably the last June meeting or probably July, depending on, depending on how much we get done this Monday. Because we are, we've got some catching up to do. So then we've got to pull it all together and polish it. So hopefully the last meeting in June. If not, it would have to be the July.
Okay, so there is a motion on, on the table. Um, any other questions on that discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So four to one.
Wait, is that right? Sorry.
Okay. Um, so the last item in old business is the Sheriff's Task Force update.
Yep, so it'll be super quick. So fortunately, Amory and I could not attend because we were at town meeting. Um, but I did just want to make sure, especially Dr. Wyeth, because we had talked before about like giving you the information and then you sharing out. Um, there is a presentation in there on marijuana edibles. And it just kind of goes back to that conversation we had last meeting when, um, the youth ambassadors and Impact Mobile were here and experiences that are happening in the Coakley and the high school. So if you can share that, maybe with, um, Dr. Frazek, Dr. um, Calligan and Mr. Quigley.
Sure. You, you forwarded that to me?
I can. It's in our packet, but I can send it directly to you if you would like.
Yeah.
And then, um, Monday, June 12th is the next Sheriff Task Force.
Any questions on that before we move on? Okay, so that brings us to the end of old business and then brings us up to new business. Um, and so the first item here is the Unit A Start Times MOU addendum.
Yep, so I think we can cover this pretty quickly as well. So as everybody is aware, um, once the whole start time shifted, um, last year, like, once we made the decision, last year, we entered into impact bargaining with Unit A. We already had an MOU for this current school year. Um, and there's just two stipulations, um, around extended day and also flex time for our teachers that we have agreed, um, to extend into the next school year. September 23 to June 24. Um, so the addendum to the agreement, um, is in the packet and we are just seeking a vote of approval.
Um, anybody have any questions on the MOA that is in the packet? Awesome. Uh, anybody have a motion to approve? I got Kate and I got Jim, uh, seconded by Joan. Um, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that passes five to zero.
So then we'll just want to, and then also have the union, um, we'll want to sign it and also have the union sign it as well.
Perfect. Um, okay, and then the final item, um, under new business is, uh, nope, not the final item. I'm sorry. Missed that next one. It was hidden down there. Next item on, under new business, uh, the approval of job descriptions. Take away Dr. Thompson.
Yes, there are, uh, four new job descriptions that I need, uh, approved by the school committee so I can post those positions. Um, based on previous discussions, I would, uh, I guess first ask if there's any that there are no questions on and we could just vote and then go to the ones that there might be questions on.
So, uh, how about I do a quick roll? Um, are there going to be any questions on the behavioral intervention? Okay, um, LMPA. ELL Director, any questions on that one? Nope, okay. Um, and the Assistant Superintendent of Operations and Strategy, are there going to be any questions on that one?
Can I just, it's a really stupid clarification question. Is that a redoing of Dr. Taylor's position?
Yeah, it's a reorganization. Yeah.
That's my only stupid question.
So before, before, that, that's a good point. We should clarify all of these, but like budget wise. So, um, the first one that we'll talk about more, um, was in the budget that was approved for FY24. We were upfront that we needed that position. Um, the LMPA leadership one, Principal or Director, um, obviously Joan has questions, we'll talk about it, but that position was in the FY24 budget request as well. The English lan- the English learner education director is, um, a, a reallocation of the FTE from a coordinator to the director. Um, and it, the coordinator position was fully in a grant last year FY23. We moved point five from the grant to the operating budget. And then in FY24, we were moving the full thing into the operating budget, but the goal is to out, reallocate coordinators to directors, so not an additional position. And then the Assistant Superintendent is a switch of an FTE. So not a new FTE, a new position.
Um, do we want to, do, do we need to take each of these individually voted on? We'll just quickly get through the two that we have no questions on?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good to me. Um, so on the English language learner director, do I have a motion to approve that position? Joan and seconded by Teresa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that passes five to zero. Um, and then on the Assistant Superintendent of Operations Strategy, do I have a motion moved by David and seconded by Joan? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'm sorry.
I was like, oh, okay. Five to zero.
I'm five to zero.
All those asleep?
I was like, surprise, surprise sleeper over there. I wasn't expecting that.
Me too.
Okay, so moving back to, um, we'll start with the behavioral intervention specialist, um, questions on that one.
I've, I've already candidly shared with Dr. Thompson that, um, I, I understand the vision and I support the need for the position. I've supported it all along. Um, there are aspects of the job description that Dr. Thompson knows I'm not comfortable with. Um, I, I would make a motion, if they're, not a second, that's okay. But I would make a motion that this be tabled and go back to the admin team. And Dr. Thompson can share my feedback with the admin team and possibly consider some revisions.
Um, I would share, uh, Madam Chair, that this was, this position was created with the input of the principals. Dr. Taylor and Laurie Sumito, all of which have already supported this job description.
Did you share my feedback?
I will share your feedback.
But that's what I'm asking, that my feedback be shared and it be reconsidered.
Can I, or should we get a second for the point of?
Seconds.
Well, if somebody doesn't want, I mean, if we get a second.
Second for the point of discussion.
Okay, thank you. Um, so can you share with us specifically what you are, or you do not want to share?
Can I ask a quick question first?
Yes.
At the point of clarification, what, is it in our purview, this position?
It is a thousand percent in our purview. And I clarified it with M A S eight. No, no, not, not to you.
Well, I'm just asking.
Yes, no, I, no, no. I'm just kind of hyped up about a certain number of things right now. Um, most school committees have personnel subcommittees that work on and review job descriptions. NOR never has. And we have not exactly been following the protocol around how job descriptions are supposed to happen. And I'm not saying we should have another subcommittee, but most school committees have personnel subcommittees for this reason. It is definitely under our purview.
But because we're smaller, we rely on our professionals, which it sounds like they've given their input into. But I, that's, that's why I asked, but it, to Anne Marie's, what I think she was going to ask, if, I certainly want to know what your concerns are, like.
I, I just think from everything that we've been hearing and, and what I shared with you yesterday, Dave, I feel even more like solidly, in my opinion, listening to all the school improvement plans and listening to the work of the rise and the reset. Um, I, I think this job description needs to be more aligned to that. I, I, I don't understand why a BCBA would qualify for this role. Um, I'm a little confused. I, I think you changed it, but we had always talked about this as a general ed position and then it went into our packet as a special ed position.
Yeah, I don't know why, I don't know why it was listed in the packet as special ed. It's not special ed.
All right, so it is a general ed?
It is general ed, yeah.
Um, I, I, questions and concerns that I shared with you about reporting to the director of Student Support Services? I think it's really hard to have that director and then six more bosses and the principals. And I, I, again, we are, I, I think this needs to be more closely aligned to, um, to the RISE program. And I just don't think a BCBA is the right qualification that we should be seeking.
Right, and as I explained to you, but I will share with the rest of the committee, uh, we are trying, this is a unique position. It's not like hiring a high school biology teacher. It's not, so the, um, no offense intended as a high school biology teacher. Anyways, um, that the decision to add Adjustment Counselor and BCBA there as a certification was to cast a wider net. Uh, the duties and responsibilities, what this person will be doing, is what is important. Um, you know, it, but I think casting a wide le- wide net is a smart piece. Uh, this is a position that will be supporting, you know, so there'll be a low level of intervention, behavioral intervention, and this person will be doing more of the long-term intervention. So it will actually be aligned with and working with the live RISE program as we are currently trying to construe it at the elementary schools. Um, I would love to have one of these at every single building. Um, that's not a fiscal reality at this point. So, and, you know, once again, there is no unfunded mandate. There is no unfun- there is no funds for, uh, the changes coming from, that came in November with 37 H and three quarters. So. So what this means is by delaying this or bringing this back on June 7th, uh, we, we will have lost two weeks. We will not even, we would not be interviewing possibly until July. Because you would need to post it for two weeks and then you would need to interview, so that's.
So you do have an adjustment, you have certification as an adjustment counselor or BCBA. So when you go through the review process, you're going to be looking for the candidate who can meet the needs best.
That can best meet the duties and responsibilities.
And what do you, what did, what are we talking about in terms of who they report to?
Well, the, the Director of Student Services oversees counseling in the entire district.
Okay.
So it's not distinctly different than our school adjustment counselors right now. Our school adjustment counselors report first and foremost to the Director of Student, Student Services.
Got it.
In conjunction with the building principals where they work.
So that's not a big divergence either.
It's.
But she doesn't oversee the guidance counselors. There's different.
Guidance counselors at the high school, no.
There's different models and that's a whole big, bigger conversation, but there, but. There's different models and that's a whole bigger conversation, but there, but.
But at least at the elementary level currently, all the, so I actually don't think I even realized that stuff. And that is currently, especially at the, the RISE pilot at the Oldham, you know, the adjustment counselor is the major conduit to that program. So this would potentially replace that need.
Right, so this is to augment.
I made the motion to table it.
Right, so this is the, this is to augment what we hope to have as a, so like, so we, you know, and again, this is, there was no, you know, you've heard me talk about 37 eighths and a half, so I'm not going to go back. But no guidance, no money, no instruction from anybody. DESE has been sitting here like this, they didn't even send anything out until February. And even that, it was just explaining the change four months after it happened. So theoretic, you know, so right now, we would have some sort of RISE program dealing with low-level incidents in the schools. And if someone needed more in-depth restorative work, this would be the person who would be moving around throughout the district to, to lead that, so.
Any other questions? So there is a motion on the table to table until the next meeting.
To table and revise with my feedback that I already gave.
On that motion, all those in favor? All those opposed? So the motion fails one to four. Do we have any other discussion on this? Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the job description?
Move to approve the Behavioral Intervention Specialist jobs.
Moved by David, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kate, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Four to one. Okay, I don't want to belabor it.
What a great lead-in.
What's that?
What a great lead-in.
No, I don't want to belabor it, I was going to say something else, but I honestly, I don't want to belabor it. We took the vote. Okay, so the next item, the next position is the LMPA Principal. Is there questions on that?
I don't have questions. I can restate the comments that I made. I don't believe that this is the position description that we had planned for. I don't believe that the school committee has planned to have, in, in, was intending for this to become a standalone, separate school. This job description very much reflects that. It is not reporting to the Principal of the Willet as an Assistant Principal would. And I don't think that we should be approving a job description about splitting the Willet Early Childhood Care Team into two separate distinct things. I think that comes with financial obligations and that we haven't considered, nor do I think they're in the best interest of our district at this particular time. So while I support having a full-time person in the LMPA, I do not support the current direction of separating them into two completely separate entities. And this position description reflects that vision and move, if that makes sense.
I just, I had a question, actually. So, so you mentioned the, the intention of the committee, which I could, could feasibly agree with you because I wasn't on the committee when it actually moved buildings. However, the program has grown exponentially since even that move. So I, I think the will of the committee in 2017 kind of has moved at this point, but.
Oh, no, I mean the will of the committee right now. Can you show me a meeting where we had the discussion that we wanted these to become two separate entities?
I can't show the meeting that we didn't, like, so I, I mean.
So because we didn't, because we didn't, it represents a change, therefore we have to.
I understand, I, I really do see Joan's perspective. It has not been clear. It hasn't been, I mean, even when we went to town meeting, we did not know what this was, a principal or director or a combination of both. And I think this on the previous job description and some other things that have come to this night and some other things that are coming up in Executive Session, I understand everybody is very busy, but process and protocols are not being followed. Planning is not happening and now we're starting to feel the pain points of all those things.
May I answer some of the questions? Okay, so we have talked about not having a full-time person at the preschool being a problem. There is no elementary assistant principal position currently in the Norwood Public Schools.
Can I ask a clarification on that? What is Mr. Quigley's official title?
He is the Acting Interim Director of the preschool.
I don't, I thought he was interim principal.
Well, that's what I think he called himself.
But I think.
Yeah, like, what is, what is on his paperwork? Because there have been multiple different names that have been utilized.
Yeah, well, part, part of that is, is that we, yeah, so part of what I asked in his vast amount of experience is advise me on what this position should be. There is, so if you, even if you created an assistant principal elementary position, it would go have to be negotiated with Unit B, put into that contract. It would be, if you have an assistant principal, the principal has to supervise the assistant principal. That's still going to be a problem when they're in two separate places and we're trying to solve the problem of the principal at the Willet being focused on that building. So, you know, I, you know, we'll apologize for the confusion. We are building the plane and flying it at the same time.
Something a lot this week.
But this was a decision we were looking at, you know, as we were dealing with several other things. The, the reality of, you know, we have started going with the term principal because the term director is problematic. Director in this district is not necessarily an independent contract, so.
Say that again, director's not.
A director is not, so you have, you have other directors in the, in the district that are not independent contracts. Principal isn't.
Oh, okay.
So, I would, there is an assumption that an assistant principal would automatically make less money. That is not necessarily the case at, at preschool level. So I guess that's all I have. If you would like to take longer to study that, study this, we can, we can do that.
Everything that you have said, I hear and appreciate and I understand. It doesn't change my concern that by setting up a separate entity, we are setting ourselves up. But that is what this is doing. Whether or not we don't have an assistant elementary school principal in the district, we also don't have a director of the preschool in the district, but that, we also don't have a director of the, of the LMPA in the, or principal of the LMPA, we're creating a new position. I think that we should sit down and look at what are the problems that we're trying to solve? What are the best ways to do that? What are the five-year ramifications of doing something like this? Instead of just having a job description appear before us and a fully-formed school improvement plan for a school that technically doesn't have its own template? Or its own, it's an existence, but it's not, it's always been under the Willet. And so those are two major shifts in how we understand the number of schools that we have, the amount of resources that we have, where we're putting resources that have come, come through via job description and not come from, with consideration from the committee about what, how that impacts us policy-wise, how that impacts us budget-wise and how that impacts us five years down the road. So like I said, I, I do not want to remove the position from the budget. I voted for it in the budget, but I did not have the information that I have at today's meeting when we had that conversation, which is that this is moving in an entirely, like, it's opening a new school, basically.
So, you know, the, we did not choose to, you know, tell the DESE that the LMPA was a separate school because we did not have a separate leader for the school. If you have a separate school, you need to have a principal.
Dave, you're missing the point that the committee never had this discussion.
It's a process issue, Dave.
Can I ask, can we have the discussion? Can we put, can we?
Well, it's not, it, that is technically not on the agenda.
Not tonight, I'm saying can we move it up?
I'm open to that.
Yeah, because it's not getting smaller. We've been talking about the need and we've never talked about, this is, this, well, in my mind, and maybe it's because of some of the work we do at the elementary subcommittee too. It was never like, this person is temporary and they're going to then go away. Like, the understanding was it's growing, it's not, it's inefficient to have someone go back and forth in, in terms of the building, so. But, yeah, I mean, it's, so to that end, it needs to, I don't think we can put it off, like, too long. So can we, like, put it on at, like, an soon, an early, like, an agenda that's coming up? Our next agenda?
Teresa?
Just to the point of alignment. I just looked, no, no, this is important. Because the discussion that you just referenced in the subcommittee you were in is not the discussion that we had in the Budget Subcommittee and it's documented in the Budget Subcommittee.
I referenced a specific discussion.
I need to say, I need to say this.
Because I think we're getting in the weeds. From my discussion, my understanding, I was talking about my overall understanding of the impression and the, the direction of LMPA. I don't think we need to, you're, what's happening is it hasn't been formalized and we need to formalize it, even though I think people thought it was, like, it was, we were taking it for granted. Some of us were taking it for granted that this was going to happen. So if we need to add it into the form, do the formality, then I, you need to get it posted, right?
I mean, this isn't just a formality. I think the creation of an entirely separate school carries with it budget implications five years down the road.
Yeah, but it already exists.
But it, not as a separate principal with a separate PTO, it says co-PTO right now, with separate learning outcomes and separate, like, it's, it's separating structures. And so my concern is, is what happens five years down the road? And, and does this actually solve the problem of the Willet? Or are we adding another position that should only be an interim position when we have an elementary subcommittee that's going and we have fifth grade moving out of, out of our ele, like, so, like, why are we putting on a full-time forever position when it may be that we only need this for two more years? But we haven't examined that and looked at it from a 360 and that's what my concern is about the process. Do we need somebody right now for this year? Yes. Do we need somebody next year? Probably. Do we need somebody after the fifth grade moves out of the elementaries? I don't know.
Can I, so, I am not against a full-time person in the Willet, I support it, Dr. Quigley. I know that the need is there. I am agreeing with a lot of Joan is saying, I'm not refuting the need. I've been telling everybody around this table for 10 months that we're not following process and protocol. This type of tension is going to continue to happen if we don't get back to how we're supposed to be operating. If you look at the Budget Subcommittee meetings and minutes, which obviously I'm in all of those meetings, the discussion was always interim principal for this year, which if you go back and you look at our minutes from our meetings here, we voted on that. If you go back and you look at Executive Session minutes, it was never discussed, finalized. If you look at Budget Subcommittee meetings, it was never finalized, even last week at town meeting. It was still up in the air. Both the position that I just voted against was not finalized. And this position, there was still discussion and you can look at more than one budget meeting where it was always, is it a director, is it an assistant principal, is it a principal? The process wasn't followed right. We did not get these in our packet until Monday, Monday, I had to ask for them. I, they did not go until Monday. I immediately wrote questions, I talked to you yesterday, Dave. I shared my concerns, I am following protocols. As I'm hearing now Joan's perspective, I'm realizing even more how we're supposed to operate is not being respected.
Okay, so what are the options?
The options are we can approve it, we cannot approve it, you can table it. Those are the options.
Move to approve the LMPA principal posting.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment. Move to approve a one-year position description.
I better reject it. So move to approve the LMPA principal job description, as is.
Point of order, if, for clarification. If we were to vote against that very specific motion, is it gone? Or we can we not bring it back up again? Like, I don't want to hem us into saying we're not getting somebody at the LMPA next year.
If we vote it, no, now Joan make a motion to modify it to one year, or.
Anybody who voted.
In the majority could reconsider it at the next meeting, right, Joan?
Yes, that's my understanding of Robert's.
I was just trying to think.
Okay, that's what I was.
Could I, could I answer some of the questions? So quite honestly, this school should have been separated a long time ago. Okay, and I think I've already said that. The process is you basically fill out a form for DESE and they create a separate sort of piece. I'm not quite sure I understand what the budget implement, I mean, except for having an FTE to run the building, I'm not quite sure what other budget pieces we're worried about. I mean, it actually will be easier because instead of trying to share one budget line between two buildings in two different places and two different secretaries, we would be splitting that out. But we basically would be budgeting the same way. It is basically an amount of money per student for supplies, you know, staffing is staffing and a lot of it at the LMPA is around the special education. It is a program that is growing. I strongly suspect that within a year from now, we'll be looking at adding another classroom. I can fully, you know, and I guess from, you know, I have explained my strategy and my thought on this process about job descriptions and why I wanted to do it at this point in time. Obviously, that was a mistake with the committee, so I will, I mean, but, you know, at this point, if you would like to not amend it, we'll see if we can find an interim person for next year. That's fine. We can put off not splitting the schools up. That is not what I have put on the table at this point. I have put the position that was in the budget that we have spoken about for the leadership of the Little Mustangs preschool, an assistant principal position. It is, it is not going to be easily done in our current situation with the needs of our youngest students to have the principal at, you're still going to have the principal having to supervise two buildings because that is what would need to happen. He would need to lead both buildings, so.
Where's the kindergarteners going to be once the Coquelin Middle School opens in two years?
That's part of the, that's part of the.
I mean, they'll probably, in the immediate term, still be at the Willet. I mean, I can't imagine in the same year they would move anywhere.
Okay, so in three years, where is the kindergarten going to be?
I bet the Willet.
Maybe? What's going to be going into the middle schools?
The elementaries? I'm guessing from my understanding, where we're so overcrowded anyway, that a lot of special space or other classrooms are going to open up, that is.
That's your personal.
Personal opinion based on.
Without having it.
Totally, totally.
Okay, but we haven't hired the consultant, we just had a conversation about the fact that we haven't hired a consultant. So those are your personal opinions. These are some of the things that I'm talking about. We don't know. And we do know that there's going to be a significant shift in our elementary schools next year. I mean, two years from now, so why would we approve a full-time, we, you can.
Because it's not a, I mean, the person.
It's a permanent position.
Forever and ever, it never goes away?
It's an annual contract, right?
Yeah.
All right, so how many annual contracts have we gotten rid of in Norwood?
Now, if the person can be shifted somewhere else because, because we need it.
Somebody who's been hired specifically to lead a preschool is going to be shifted somewhere else? My, my point is, is that we haven't had this.
We have a million and five needs, so yes.
This conversation we have not had.
Right, but you're going to hire, you're not going to not have a preschool. I mean, well, I mean, you can, but it's going to cost you more with no offset to do the special ed service.
Because even if, well, yeah, I guess, so I can say, even if the Willet can.
I'm not, I, I am, I am going to say that I am not moving to entertain something that's not on the budget. I mean, it's not on the agenda starting at 10:30 at night. This is exactly the conversation that we need to have.
Can I, can I, this is why on Friday, before the agenda was posted, I told you we needed Executive Session. There are so many contractual things that I cannot say and questions, and now Joan has more, that needs to be discussed. This is not the process that should have been followed. And our why is getting impacted by our how. So I think because it's late and we have so much more to do, that we, we should vote on it. But I'm telling everybody at this table, we have got to get our act together or this is going to continue to happen and we're not going to be successful.
It creates tension for me to be reminded of that repeatedly, okay?
I agree, we should vote.
So there was a. Well, we need a second. Nobody's seconded it.
What was the motion, David?
To approve it, as is.
Second.
Try a second by Kate. And please, no, any other discussion? Great. All those in favor of approving the LMPA principal?
Aye.
Two, all those opposed?
So, that, three to two.
Two to three, yes.
Yep, that's what I meant. And I will candidly say I am voting against it because I do feel like we need to have further discussion and look forward to me being one of the people to bring it back up at the next meeting.
You mean what?
I said me bringing it back up at the next meeting.
So, it will go on the next agenda?
Well, I...
That's what she's saying.
Yeah, that's what she's saying.
That's what I'm saying.
No, I'm just clarifying.
I can do that, right?
No, 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 I'm just clarifying in terms of like to-dos and what to expect.
Yes, if, if we're talking about next steps, that, that is my intention. That is my intention of voting against it, is that to put it on the next agenda as one of the noes to be reconsidered after we can discuss it further in executive session especially, and...
Is that, is the topic, the idea of separating the programs, or? I think what a lot of us wanna say, we can't say right now. We have to go into executive session.
As of right now, I'm saying the LMPA principal position would be back on the agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that is it for the job descriptions. The final item on new business is Dr. Wyeth and the PD plan for the 23-24 school year.
Hi, was the EL director approved? Did I miss that? Okay, okay, thank you.
There was no discussion.
I was just going to the last.
No discussion, that's why you missed it.
Great. Yeah, so, thank you. Quick update, it's getting late, on the PD plan for next year, what was in your packet has now been updated. So, your, the document in your packet's a little outdated. So, what I'll do is I'll walk you through the basic plans, and we're still, the PD committee is still working out some of the specific details. But what we've decided, we wanna really use our PD time for next year is to make sure that we have proper training for our new SEL programs. So, there's gonna be during our full day, right out of the gate in September, a second step training and character strong training at the elementary level. We are also gonna prioritize trauma-informed practices and instruction. And so we've got a proposal on the table that is looking quite strong for next year, and we're waiting for a second one just to compare and contrast with. But we will definitely have a, basically 10 hours of trauma-informed training for all staff. We're gonna divide it in, into two groups, an elementary group and a secondary group. And then that'll be followed up with some consulting work at each school so that the trainer will be able to do some casework with, with some of the staff that are really struggling with certain kids, how to manage certain kids, and do some direct, hands-on kind of modeling work with, with our staff to make sure that those strategies that they learn in the, in the training stick and are used. Now, the other, the other two things that we're fitting into our limited days is the mental health first aid training. We've got a proposal on the table to do that. It will happen outside of our regular PD time because we can't fit it all in there. But Sharice can speak a little bit more to that if need be. Sharice and Lisa Bourgeois are our two trainers for that, and they've got, I think, a really good, workable plan in place to do the first, I think, the first 100 people, right? And we're gonna be doing this sort of on a, on a rollout basis over the next several years to, to get everybody covered. Alongside of that, Lori Samino is gonna be implementing safety care crisis prevention training, and she too has a plan in place. She's got three trainers that will be working with groups of teachers. The special, they'll be working just with the special ed staff, training them first, and then we'll see if we need to sort of expand that training in the future. But they too have a plan for, for building that training into our existing PD schedule, so... And they're, they're picking staff across the district so that no one school or no one grade level is getting pulled from other critical work that's going on at the time, too. So, we always have this tension with special ed staff. If, you know, they have to do something during our PD time, they're missing something that would be good for them to be involved in along with the regular ed teacher. That's a universal conflict I've been dealing with forever, and it's just, you know, so priorities have to be made, decisions have to be made as to who needs to go to what, what sort of training, you know, is most important. But anyway, Lori's got a plan in place. The paraprofessionals, we've contracted with Rebus to do some specific work with paraprofessionals over the course of the year. There are several modules that we've identified that should be really helpful to the paraprofessionals, and so that's scheduled in on, on our half-days. And then, of course, we have some time built in for curriculum work. So, our elementary coordinators will be able to take some time. We've really targeted January 2nd for that kind of work, grade level department work. Department chairs will have some time on January 2nd to work with their, their, you know, department colleagues, bring in maybe a trainer here and there that is focused on, on the specific content. Lori Donnelly has planned, arranged for ST math training at the kindergarten level, and so she has plugged that in for three half-days. So, you can see that, that'll be on our, our plan as well. And then, there's some other spots that will get filled in that, you know, in terms of our, our curriculum coordinators working with teachers, like Elizabeth Warren. We'll find some time to work with grades three, four, and five around STEM scopes, et cetera. We've also built in some time for some technology workshops. That's on the afternoon of January 2nd. That'll probably be a choice menu of sorts that people can say, yeah, I'd like to know more about Kami, or I'd like to know more about, you know, a bunch of other apps that teachers are using. And that was very successful last year, and so we wanted to sort of run that again this year. So, that's it, sort of, in a nutshell. The, the plan will be hopefully nailed down by the time I leave, and JJ will be able to take it up and run with it. But I'm feeling really good about this plan. I think it's actually covering a lot of bases, and it does provide opportunities for, for a lot of different things that we wanna accomplish, you know? So, I'm happy to take any, any questions. The other part that we're working on is sort of utilization of second staff meetings, you know? Principals typically have one staff meeting a month with their, with their schools, and we have a second staff meeting that either can be used by the principals or by folks like the department chairs and the curriculum coordinators. So, we're working out a schedule that, that balances those needs as well. So, it'll probably go 50-50. Half of those days will be for principals, and the other half will be for sort of curriculum work, common planning kind of activities around curriculum and our data analysis work that we also wanna keep, keep on top of. So, I'm happy to take any quick questions, but that's it.
Dr. Wyeth, did you say it's changed since it's been in our packet?
Yeah, yeah, we've cleaned it up a little bit. I mean, the basic, the basic information's there, but we've cleaned up some of the, the stuff around, you know, I think if I look at, what was the, for instance, the mental health stuff, we kinda took out of there because it's gonna happen in, in, sort of, in small groups. But, yeah, it's, it's sort of, yeah, it's just been cleaned up a bit.
So, when I spoke to you earlier today, Dr. Thompson, one of the questions was like, there's some things that aren't yet populated, and I know you said that it's still happening, and I hear you're saying it right. I'm a little uncomfortable with approving the plan that isn't fully populated in our packet. And then I did have questions around the mental health first aid training. I don't know if that's been conveyed.
It has.
Yeah, so, I don't know if Sharice, Sharice and Lisa have been sort of organizing that so she can answer some questions you might have.
Yeah, so, just a question. So, the grant, you can only have 20 people per instructor?
So, you can have 25. So, when we went through the instructor training, both Lisa and I were told that by the national instructors.
But then the grant that was written. So, I talked to you earlier. It's not our grant, it's the health department's grant. Appreciate what you're doing, I'm not criticizing, but we have to collaborate with them to make sure that we're implementing the grant. And we have a meeting on Friday to iron things out with the person who manages the grant. So, again, just like with process and planning, if the whole PD plan isn't yet done and if we haven't confirmed the plan for them in health first aid training with the grant, right, with the person who owns the grant, I'm just not sure why we're voting on this tonight.
Well, because Dr. Wyeth will not be able to present it. So, that's, unless we're gonna wait till the 21st, which I have not, I know you're not, not able to be here for the next one, so...
I mean, it can be presented, it doesn't have to be me presenting it. I mean, I, it's gonna get, you know, I think the last PD committee is, is June 13th. Did I have that right? And so, hopefully by then, we'll have, you know, some of the, some of the specifics worked out, but...
Yeah, but what are those, what are those specifics?
Well, the specifics would be the, the particular trainer, you know, I mean...
That's not, that's not something that needs to be, I mean, the, the general overview of what we're doing on what day is in that plan, am I wrong?
Right, no, that's right.
Right, so the general plan...
The only thing that we're missing, if you look at empty slots, it's like for six, eight and stuff, some of those, the principals and the department chairs have to decide which days are gonna be ours. So, it's either gonna be a principal working with their staff on, on one of those empty six, 12 days, or it's gonna be the department chairs, you know?
But working on what? Like, if you look at January 30th, or February 7th, or March 7th, like, I, I don't know what they would be working on.
Each principal, as, as you heard, sort of with the school improvement plans, has things that they need to work on. So, that would be their agenda that they would develop. Each department chair has things that they need to work on with their department, so they manage those agendas and would create the agenda for those days.
Right, and I'd also add for the mental health first aid, so that grant was written on prior guidelines. So, when Lisa and I also spoke with Elizabeth, who's the new director, that was based on old guidelines. So, I would be sure to argue that, given that Lisa and I are doing this for free, for the town, and that we're in the national...
You're not supposed to be. There's conversations we have to have, right? About that grant.
Right, but I'm not sure that affects...
It does, which is why I've been facilitating this meeting.
It affects when we're, when we're offering the mental health training?
What?
This conversation on Friday affects the mental health training with its schedule?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't quite understand that myself.
We're not gonna have it on those days based on the conversation on Friday?
They are, they are...
How are we funding it with the training materials? You're only allowed four trainings a year. Have you cleared it with Elizabeth that we can just do whatever we want? Because she also has to train on the town side. I'm trying to respectfully have these conversations. I talked to you earlier. I've been facilitating, like, I have been as the Minds Matter Health Department liaison. I have whole share drive with all the documents. I introduced Elizabeth to everybody weeks ago. I tried to coordinate this meeting. I'm doing everything I can in a respectful manner.
So, I'm not questioning the respectful manner or the, or the work that is going to continue, but we, this is a plan for what PD is going to be offered next year, and, and it's even given to the detail to what day we're going to do it. Some of those details are what we will work out with various entities.
How are we handling the contractual issues that I asked you about earlier for the mental health first aid training? You can't answer that because we're not in executive session.
We have an answer for that, and I believe I answered it beforehand.
You told me that it was possible, but there...
Is it time-sensitive, Amory?
Yep.
Can we push it to another meeting, or is, do you guys, is this time-sensitive for you that you need the approval? No, it's not time-sensitive for Lisa. Okay, so we could move to have these conversations that need to be had and bring it back to Fora for approval?
Does anybody want a second there? Say goodbye, Teresa. Any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, four, four to zero, one abstention to postpone. Okay. So, that actually brings us to the end of the scheduled items, except for consent agenda. Dr. Thompson, do we have some donations?
We have two donations, one from Ohio Pile Rebate for the high school for $26.93, and Bay State Textiles Districtwide for $712.20. Move to accept both donations.
Seconded by Joan, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that passes five to zero. And that brings us to school committee agenda. I'll start down the end, Teresa.
I'll wait till next time.
Okay. Kate?
Just wanna appreciate our teachers all the time, but last week we weren't here, so... Love you teachers, thank you for everything.
Happy belated teacher appreciation.
Happy belated teacher appreciation.
Uh, Joan?
Uh, happy belated teacher appreciation day. That is all.
David?
Nothing this evening, Adam, sure.
It's a week.
Yeah.
Oh, blessedly, I have nothing either, so that was a very short school committee agenda. Great, so, our next meeting is Wednesday, June 7th. I keep wanting to say 8th for some reason, I'm sorry. Wednesday, June 8th, we will be back here in the school committee room. And thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening. We do have to go into executive session, so we will only reconvene for the purpose of adjournment. I do have to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Moved by David, seconded by Teresa, and I'll poll individually. Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I am a yes as well. So, thank you very much for joining us, and good night.